Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April eighth, 2024. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wheat Ridge's hand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Holte.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Amanda Weaver. Corey Stites.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no minutes in our packet to review. Are there any changes to be made in the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed as presented. We have several proclamations. And I would like to invite CSO Phil Schroeder to join me at the podium. Phil is here tonight. There you are. Thanks for joining us tonight. I am happy to read a proclamation to designate the week of April fourteenth through twenty-four, 2024, as Animal Care and Control Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas animal care and control personnel provide essential community functions by enforcing animal control laws, protecting the public from diseases such as rabies, and educating the public on the proper care of community pets. And whereas, animal care and control personnel risk life and limb by going out into the public to protect the welfare of helpless animals and pets that are rescued from injury, disease, abuse, and starvation. And whereas, animal care and control officers conduct humane investigations and protect animals from abusers and people from dangerous animals. And whereas, the accomplishments of the animal care and control officers achieved through compassion and collaboration defend and are the voice of justice for the voiceless victims they often defend in a court of law. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is hereby dedicated to showing our appreciation to the animal care and control officers, such as the city's community service officers, who endorse the bond between animals and humans, advocating for responsible ownership by setting standards of professionalism in public safety and animal welfare. Now therefore, I Bud Starke and the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through twenty, 2024, as Animal Care and Control Week, Officer Appreciation Week, and affirm and reaffirm the city's commitment to supporting the men and women tasked with enforcing regulations, bylaws, and ordinance regarding animal control dated April eighth, 2024. Would you like to say a few words? Here's this is for you.
CSO Supervisor Philip Schrader, again on behalf of the entire staff of the Wheat Ridge Community Services team, want to thank you for this proclamation and recognition. Animal Care and Control Officer Appreciation Week is important and significant to all the animal control officers. It especially validates all of our hard work performed, as well as our due diligence in serving our community. Both our CSOs and seasonal parks rangers take great pride in handling wildlife and domestic animal calls while also providing much-needed other services within the community. This includes our city parks and rebelt patrolling, providing outreach and resources to persons experiencing homelessness, and providing residential and business code education and nuisance enforcement. It's quite a large task that these dedicated officers and public servants perform daily while practicing relationship-based policing within the Wheat Ridge community. And again, thank you again.
Thank you very much. We've got a photo, we've got a photo coming, so. All right. Thanks a lot. I would like to invite Jennifer Griffin to join me at the podium. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming tonight. This is a proclamation about National Crime Victims Rights Week, April twenty-one through twenty-seven, 2024. Whereas the Victims' Rights Movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that establish essential rights for victims. And whereas, the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in a criminal justice process, not only the victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights. And whereas, supporting victims of crime is crucial to the United States' justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. And whereas, the accomplishments of the Victims' Rights Movement achieved through compassion and collaboration and built on the courageous advocacy of individual victims and their families across the country inspire us and hope for future progress and greater healing. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and in our victim's service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-one through twenty-seven, 2024, as Crime Victims' Rights Week, and reaffirm our city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Dated this eighth day of April, 2024. Now I'd like to present you with a copy of the presentation, and would you like to say a few things?
Terrific.
I just want to, I'm right here to represent Victim Outreach Incorporated. We are a nonprofit agency that contracts with a number of different cities in Jefferson County, and it's an honor to serve the victims of crime in Wheat Ridge and people experiencing trauma. So thank you so much for the support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us, and I think we've got a, got a photo off there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to invite Jim Rosemelt, our forestry and open, from Forestry and Open Space, Benny Paz, Parks, Forestry and Open Space Manager, and Bob Timms of the Wheat Ridge Rotary to join me at the podium. How's everybody doing? Thanks for coming down. This is a proclamation in support of Earth Day on April twenty-second, 2024, and National Arbor Day on April twenty-sixth, 2024. Whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas, we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources. And whereas, this year marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the Earth Day movement. Let it be known that the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources. And whereas, trees provide one of the, provided one of the first business opportunities in Wheat Ridge in the eighteen-sixties. And whereas, trees continue to be an important part of the quality of life to community members and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas, residents, businesses, the green industry, elected officials and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide a healthy tree canopy throughout the city of Wheat Ridge as part of a comprehensive community forest program. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by National, by the National Arbor Day Foundation for forty-four consecutive years. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby declare Monday, April twenty-second, 2024, as City of Wheat Ridge Earth Day Celebration Day, encouraging people in Wheat Ridge to combat climate change and environmental degradation, to support green economy initiatives, and to inspire others to undertake similar actions. And I also declare Friday, April twenty-sixth, 2024, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration Day, encouraging community members and businesses of Wheat Ridge to care for, enjoy, and appreciate trees in your backyard, in your neighborhood, and throughout the city. Thank you. And this is for you all, whoever's taking it, and you gotta, who's gonna say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Benny Paz. I'm the Parks, Forestry and Open Space Manager. I'd like to recognize Jim Romel. He's the Forestry and Open Space Supervisor. That's it, right? I'd like to recognize them and his crew for their hard work. We started this year with some challenges from Mother Nature, but our team has shown up every day with, with a smile and ready to work. Speaking of challenges, I have a couple of events that I'd like to announce. We've scheduled another branch drop-off day for this Friday, April twelfth, from eight to three, and Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight to three, at Anderson Park. It's going to be in the northeast parking lot. So we will be there those two days. The tree sale, our annual tree sale, is Saturday, April twentieth, from eight to three, and Sunday, from eight to twelve, also at Anderson Park. That's going to be located near the Anderson Building. We have an Earth Day Extravaganza. That's a volunteer event. That's going to be April twenty-sixth at Prospect Park. You can register for that at the Rooted and Fun website. And the tree sale is first come, first served, so there's no register for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having guys through this. We've got a photo off there. Here we go. All right. Suck it up together. All right. Thanks a lot. Okay, we will now go to our public's right to speak. Members of the public may come to council or join us online to speak about, to address their counsel for three minutes. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And my first speaker will also be taking comment on our special study session. We'll do that now also. So I have Bob Timm. So Bob, if you'd like to join us at the podium. And please, if you'd give us your first name and last name and spell your last name for the record.
So hello, my name is Bob Timm, and T-I-M-M. I'm from Wheat Ridge Rotary. And today I'm speaking about two things. One is the Wheat Ridge Rotary Club that has been a valuable member of the city for fifty years in July of this year. So be aware of some invitations that we're going to send out for some events that are happening prior, or after that. But the real reason I came here tonight and stood up earlier with Jim and Benny is to talk about, all right, a tree grant that Wheat Ridge Rotary got. So we have joined forces with our district and got a $2,300 grant to plant eighteen trees in residential homes in Wheat Ridge. So you know you're doing the sale on the twentieth and twenty-first, and people are coming in and paying seventy-five to eighty dollars for the tree. So we said, how about if we scholar eighteen trees in the community? So I was going to come here tonight and beg you for help getting the word out on this. But last week, an article in our neighborhood Gazette came out, and we made the front page. So we have sold out on the trees and now have a waiting list of three. So if there's trees left over after the sale this weekend, we'll be able to help that out. The one thing I was a little disappointed in, we thought we'd only have to plant five trees, and we offered the people right to pay for the trees, transport the trees, or plant, or all three of those. And now, we only have five people picking up trees and we're planting fifteen trees in the community. So if you know Wheat Ridge Rotary, we're a bunch of old guys, so give us a little prayer for this. And in case you don't know about Wheat Ridge Rotary, here's just a couple of quick things about it. We have, like I said, we've been around for fifty years. We have a scholarship program where we award four scholarships a year to students from Wheat Ridge High and Jefferson High. Since nineteen-eighty, we've awarded about $500,000 in scholarships. We also do an event called Flower Power, where we pick up flowers from the Colorado Home and Garden Show and deliver them to six senior housing facilities in Wheat Ridge. This last March, we delivered two-hundred-and-fifty plants. And then some of you may know that we helped at the Carnation Festival in the Beer Garden. Also, past things we've done, we've supported the rec center with, with some support to help build the room, the meeting rooms that are there. We've helped with Wheat Ridge High School Field of Dreams, and we are currently a sponsor of the hospital's maternity waiting, maternity waiting room.
All right.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much for your support.
For what the Rotary does in our community. We appreciate it. That was everyone I had to speak on our regular agenda, but now I, we will go to our special study session, and our first speaker will be Kim Calamino, and I have Kelly Blynn on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor for Tim, council members. Kim Calamino, forty-seventy Dover Street, here in Wheat Ridge. I'm here to speak about the traffic topic tonight. I appreciate that the city is preparing to address growing community concerns about traffic. Besides speeding, these, besides speeding, these issues can include a steep increase of volume of cut-through traffic on neighborhood streets, which were neither designed nor intended to serve that volume, an increased failure to fully comply with stop signs, reduced safety to everyone using those neighborhood streets, and an issue that should be included in the discussion, the peaceful enjoyment of their neighborhoods by residents. I also appreciate the recent meeting arranged for me and my neighbors with members of different departments working on these issues. In that meeting, we heard about the possibility of the city getting grant dollars to conduct a demonstration project, possibly specific to our Bel Air neighborhood, which bears the burden of having the only streets, through streets from Thirty-eighth to Forty-fourth between Kipling and Wadsworth. While a number of potential traffic calming strategies were mentioned, this, it is the demonstration idea that we were most excited about, but we have these suggestions. Please take a more holistic approach to the neighborhood. Broaden the area of the project. Rather than look only at Carr and Dover, we suggest that the project include Balsam and the Everett-Estes Cut Through Routes to head down Dudley and Forty-first Avenue, as the street that carries the most pedestrian traffic bisects all the cut-throughs and will no doubt be impacted by the addition of a traffic signal at Forty-first and Dover. And I have these additional concerns, comments, and suggestions. The grant opportunity described in the memo sounds like it is intended to address only roads along the regional high-injury network and critical corridor doors. These are not neighborhood streets, so I'd like that clarified. Two, to say that ten miles an hour over the speed limit is okay regardless of the posted base speed limit doesn't make sense. It's a matter of scale. Ten miles an hour over a posted twenty-five mile an hour limit carries significantly higher risk to safety and peaceful enjoyment in a neighborhood than does ten miles an hour over a posted thirty-five mile an hour limit on more major roadways. Three, citizens should be engaged in the cross-department discussions and information sharing or in some other ongoing way. Perhaps an ad hoc or permanent citizens transportation advisory committee could be established. That might supplement and inform the neighborhood traffic calming program. Four, I agree public education is key to any initiative making, aiming to make improvement. But I hope, hopeful efforts besides a static FAQ on the website and occasional social media posts can be considered. And I like the idea of any additional tools you can identify to bring tickets to speeders. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Blynn, and Tamara Phalen is on deck.
Thanks so much for the chance to speak tonight. My name's Kelly Blynn, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team, or the ADATs, and just wanted to really say that we appreciate council taking up the issue of traffic safety during tonight's study session, and want to offer our support for some of these items in the packet and, and some of our perspectives on speeding. We really appreciate staff and council taking a look at speed limits. We know that the faster cars are traveling, the greater chance for serious injury or fatality if there's a crash, particularly with cyclists and pedestrians. So it's critical we take a good look at this. We know that, recognize that staff didn't find really pervasive speeding in their data collection, but they did find a lot of violators, and we know it only takes one to change someone's life. And we know that speeding is way up nationally since COVID. We encourage staff and council to reconsider our speed limits, both on our corridors and residential neighborhood streets. Denver has joined many cities in going to twenty miles per hour on residential streets, which can really improve safety for kids and all ages using the street to walk, bike, and get around. Many are also recommending reconsidering past engineering practices like the eighty-fifth percentile rule, which simply codifies how fast people are already going, regardless of whether that's a safe speed to travel. We're also really thrilled that council is, is considering the goal of Vision Zero, which is something we highlighted at this year's ADAT State of the City event as a priority for us. Since 2010, we've had over three hundred people seriously injured or killed in crashes on Wheat Ridge streets, about seventy of which were bicyclists and pedestrians. Most of these happen on our major roadways like Wadsworth, and particularly at intersections. As you're likely aware, unfortunately, just last week, there was a pedestrian seriously injured at Forty-fourth and Miller, right where we've been working with the city on the Safe Roots to Parks Initiative, and the driver failed to yield to the person who was in the crosswalk. Every crash is preventable, and we're eager to work with council and staff to craft a resolution that helps us make progress on our traffic safety in our city. We have some ideas for how to craft a Vision Zero resolution that isn't just about setting the goal, but sets out some concrete action items for how to make progress towards it, and hope we can work together on this going forward. Finally, it's great to hear that the police department is looking into automated enforcement. This can be a great tool for lowering speeds and doing so in a way with far less bias. We hope council will move forward with testing that approach and using that tool in their toolbox. Thanks so much for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Phalen, and Candace Tomlinson on deck.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Phalen. I live at forty-two oh five Dover Street. I am very excited about the prospect of city council taking a look at traffic as a holistic. I'm going to basically reiterate what everyone else has said or support what everyone else has said, but it would be great if you could help us make our street less attractive to traffic. You have some basically quantitative data. The Wheat Ridge Police Department just posted on social media that they had a black box on Dover Street. For one week, they recorded seven thousand three hundred and sixty-three cars. That's a lot of cars. It would be great if you could also take a look at some qualitative information. I'm here to give you some of that tonight. My husband and I walk regularly, right around four o'clock, and as we come out of our house and look up the street, we can see people, basically conga line of cars coming down just constant. Our street does not have sidewalks. We like that. It gives it a nice rural, rural feel. And there are always people out walking, usually in the morning and in the evening, especially at rush hour, exactly at the same time that people are using our street as a cut-through. There are people with dogs. There are people with strollers. So it just creates So it just creates a feeling of non-safety. The road there is very narrow. We try to walk in single file, but people have to go around us. I hope as part of this process that you need, that you get more data for analysis. Not only the speed, which they have some information on, but also the volume, as well as the classification of vehicles that are coming down the street. Now, there are big trucks. We've seen semis, moving trucks, of course, garbage trucks. We definitely need something like upgraded speed bumps. They have basically degraded in the neighborhood. There's a speed bump that's very close to my house. And because people, as they're driving north on Dover, go off that speed bump, they don't see another speed bump. They tend to speed up right in front of our house. And we see that. My husband and I like to sit outside in the summertime and watch the traffic and say hello to neighbors as they go by. If you could even lower the speed limit, I would be in favor of that, even temporarily. Whatever signs you can do that say traffic is being monitored by radar, basically anything. So whatever you can do to try to make our street less attractive, to cut through traffic, I would very much appreciate. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Candace Tomlinson.
So before I start, I have a question. So I had a comment both on the Lutheran one as well as the traffic. But I can't, I can't do them both in three minutes, so.
Well, why don't you, why don't you see the?
So what would you?
Do the best you can, and we'll, if it gets to be too long, we'll cut you off.
Okay. Because I'm more interested in the traffic issue, but I did want to just make a couple of comments. Okay, so Candace Tomlinson, T-O-M-L-I-N-S-O-N. I live at 8600 West 41st Avenue. So just real quick on the Lutheran plan. So I was part of the neighborhood focus group for the master plan. And in general, I thought it was a good process, and I was really happy with it, with the outcome of it. However, it did take place during COVID. And I have run into so many people in my neighborhood, as well as at the recent District III meeting I attended, where Lutheran talked about their plans. There is still huge misconception about what's going on up at Lutheran. I don't think a lot of people even know there's a master plan or what's in that master plan. They think it's just going to be all high-rise apartment buildings. And so the plan to kind of go ahead with the charter and the zoning amendments now, I guess I was thinking that maybe it might be better if there was just some more time for community education about what really is going on there and what the intention is and what the master plan is to maybe try to avoid a lot of anger, frustration, thoughts that the city is just ramming this down their throats, and they have had no input or no, yeah, no, no input, no acknowledgement of what's going on. So that's why I was kind of thinking maybe option number one might be a possibility right now from that perspective, so. Okay, that's all my comment on Lutheran. My second comment was on the traffic. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time reiterating what everyone else has said. We're really hopeful that we'll get a grant for the Bel Air neighborhood to try to do some traffic volume and traffic discouragement and some safety improvements on that street. As far as some other things on traffic, I again do not really agree with the threshold for violation being set over 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. That just, maybe it applies to some standard, I don't know, but it's just not helpful for, especially for our neighborhood residential streets. People, they know they're not going to get ticketed unless they're going 10 miles over an hour. There's absolutely no incentive for them to go the speed limit. So I'd really like to see that in the traffic studies be changed. I'd like to see the speed limit reduced to 15 to 25 mile, or 20 miles an hour on residential streets, especially if the city is going to go with no violation unless you're 10 miles over the speed limit. And again, Denver has moved to 20 miles an hour. And that would be really appropriate for our streets that are narrow, no sidewalks, et cetera. The other comment I had was the NTMP program. Just to be blunt, I would like to see it dissolved. I, it pits neighbor against neighbor, street against street. Neighborhood voting is not a good criteria to see if there's really an issue. I don't get to vote on traffic lights or stop signs anywhere else. The city controls and has the responsibility of the streets. And so not the neighborhood, not the neighborhood people. So I don't, I think the city needs to step up to this responsibility. It's their grid system or lack thereof that is creating a lot of these neighborhood traffic problems. So I would like to see that. I don't think the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is efficient or effective. And then very lastly is I would also like to see there be one focal point for traffic-related concerns and problems in the city. Traffic is a multifaceted problem, require an integrated approach. It's very frustrating for citizens to try the police department, try Public Works, try NTMP. And for none of them, traffic is not their number one priority or their number one issue. And it's with valid reasons. So it would be nice, with as difficult as traffic has become, that if there was one person that citizens could go to to try to integrate and synthesize all the traffic issues across departments. I think this would be much more efficient and effective than a bunch of people or departments trying to do part-time stuff. And then finally, I also would like to see a traffic advisory board or commission that could provide more citizen input to the city on this traffic issue. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I went way over.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speakers I have signed up to speak under this. So we will go now to our next order of business. Will be agenda item number one, Councilor Holtine. Would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 062024, An Ordinance Amending Section 26109 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Public Hearing Letter Notice. At issue, prior to public hearing for quasi-judicial application, the zoning code currently requires that the city send letter notice of the hearing to owners and occupants within 600 feet of the subject property. The proposed ordinance extends this letter notice to 1,000 feet.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 062024, An Ordinance Amending Section 26109 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Public Hearing Letter Notice. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set from Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. A motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. The motion carries.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the public art selection titled "Me Can and Celestial Vines" by Tyler Fouqua to be installed at the Wheat Ridge Ward Transit Oriented Development Project site. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Ward Transit Oriented Development, TOD, project includes funding for the public art. The process for selecting public art is defined in the Public Art Management Plan. Per this process, a public art piece by Tyler Fouqua titled "Me Can and Celestial Vines" has been selected by an appointed committee for recommendation to the Cultural Commission. The Cultural Commission reviewed the proposal and is recommending the selection to city council for acceptance and purchase. The purchase price of $160,000 includes design, construction, installation, and documentation.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you. Karen O'Donnell, our works director is here this evening.
Director O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the selection for the Ward Transit Oriented Development Public Art Project. I just want to remind you, I know Councilmember Dozeman just mentioned, but we do have the Public Art Management Plan, excuse me, that was adopted by city council. And that's what we utilize as we go through the process of selecting art. And part of that is to utilize a public art consultant, which our consultant is Kendall Peterson with There Squared. And she is going to provide the presentation this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. So I'm Kendall Peterson, and I am here again to talk to you about this project at Ward Road. Do I get the button? Which button do I use to mean? Oh. But, so anyway, this was a fun one to work on. And Councilman Om was part of our group. So Councilman, feel free to interrupt me and add your comments if you would like to. So this is just a little bit about what we're going to talk about. I promise this will not take very long. But this is a project overview. As you know, this is one of the bond projects that was passed. And we, this will be the final station. There's already artwork on the north side of this station. It's a wheat stalk by a local artist as well. But we were concentrating on the southern side of the station. So this area is slated to be transit-oriented development, as we said. And it'll be kind of an interesting thing that'll grow. The area will grow and become more residential and mixed-use over time. At present, it is mostly industrial and storage and a lot of other types of businesses. So the project includes the pedestrian bridge that you saw on the first slide. And then it has also a plaza and a drop-off area at the rear part. And I think I can probably give you more of a. So anyway, this is a map of what I'm talking about. So you can see the circular part on that part. That is the circular drop-off area where people can drop people on the southern side. And then there's this multi-use path, which will come from the frontage road where the two water areas are on the bottom of the screen here, all the way up. It's about a quarter of a mile, and it's a little bit of a hike up that way. So there's some places where you can kind of stop along the way, and it'll have a large wall on the other side. So I'm going to go back and just let you know these were the group, this was the group that helped us select the artwork. We actually had to switch out our cultural commissioner representative a couple of times due to just the difficulty of getting things scheduled. So Brendan Kelly was our cultural commissioner, and this was the group. So the pedestrian bridge was always a little bit off limits for, in terms of artwork, mostly because it is an RTD feature, and it becomes hard to integrate artwork into features where RTD is building it. It just becomes a little bit long and overly difficult, I think. So we wanted to keep the artwork to the southern part of the drop-off area and also maybe going down the multi-use trail to make it feel safe and more attractive. So this is sort of a close-up of that map area. You can see the turnabout and then where the trail goes over. So people will be able to cross over and come from all of the, all of the areas to cross into this area and take this last of the, the final train on this line. Here's some views of it from the architects. And then this is the multi-use trail. You can see that it's quite a slope. This is one of the areas. And then there are some areas where they'll have to be holding back the earth on the, on the mountainside as you go up the trail. And it'll be quite a, quite a wall in some areas, just to hold back that area. It'll be a soil nail wall, so not a masonry wall. Soil nail walls, very similar to what you have in Wadsworth, on the Wadsworth project at the north end that have been already created, sort of designed to look like rock. So these are some of the bulbous for people to stop if they would like, take a little rest. So the selection process, as you know, is determined by your public art plan. And it involves three major meetings. The first one is an orientation meeting, where we talk about all the different project parameters. We have the project architects and project managers talk about what's coming up. And then we decide on criteria. So that orientation meeting happened last year in 2023. Based on the criteria that we established with the group, we did an open call for artists. We talk about whether or not we should have it, local artists, national artists. And this group felt very strongly that it should be open and that local artists should compete fairly with the rest of, with the rest of the nation. We received approximately 169 applications for this. And then we do it all online. All of the group was able to do a pre-score. And then we came back together, and we looked at about 50 of the highest-scoring entries. And then we selected four semifinalists to move forward. So that's all outlined here. And please stop me if you have any questions. So the first artists that we looked at, the artists gave their presentations via Zoom this time. It's actually turning out to be quite a handy thing to not have to have artists fly in from all over the country to do these presentations. So this is an artist who's actually from Colorado, Patrick Merrill. You've seen him present here for the Clear Creek Project. This is called Drifting Hoop. This was a, this is a kinetic piece. It's made out of stainless, maybe mirror polished steel, he doesn't know. But each of those rods would be moving slightly in the, in the air, almost like a, like a kinetic sort of cloud, if you will. It would also have a night presence. And I think this was also something that the group really wanted to make sure because this place at night, I think they wanted to help, have the public art help with the safety, the feeling of safety and the feeling of, like, this is a place where people come and it's not feeling sort of abandoned at night. So this was a piece that would be lit from the inside, and you would be able to experience it as you walked underneath it as well. This is a piece by Owen Morale by The Beacon. He is from out of New York. He was kind of inspired by the idea of kind of matching the graphics of his mirror polished steel sculpture with the architecture of the bridge. So the bridge has these crisscrossed sort of structural components, and this was sort of matching that. This piece was, was very appreciated. It was, it was quite lovely, the presentation. But I think people felt like there was a sort of, it felt very stylish, but also it was a little over budget because none of the lights and none of the actual landscaping, the platform, were included in his budget. And it didn't include any artwork, nor did Patrick's for the, for the multi-use trail, which was what they wanted. So the comments about this project were that it was, it was quite contemporary, that it felt like it fit with the architecture of the bridge. And I think there was just a concern about some of the maintenance and the fact that it was over budget. Did I go over the, I'm not sure that I did, sorry. These were the, some of the comments about Patrick Merrill. They were very worried about the maintenance concerns on the kinetic piece. They felt like it was a little bit of an experiment and that it was maybe not the place for this. It felt a little bit more sort of urban. And this is more of a space where you want people to kind of be in transit. And it felt like a place where you'd want to go underneath it on a green or in a park or something like that. And Councilman Om, please interject if you feel like you want to. I'm just, I'm paraphrasing everything. So these are the comments about Owens. The next piece was by Tyler French called Wheatfield. So this would have been a sculpture that would be in the traffic circle. And then he, he was one of the artists who actually included some pieces that would have gone down the, gotten down the trail. So these were kind of light boxes that would have two-dimensional sculptures that pulled out from the wall that were lit from behind with colors behind it. Everyone loved this part of the sculpture. I think they felt like the sculpture earlier was replicating what they already have on the other side. And it just felt, somebody said they wanted a gluten-free public art project, which I thought was kind of funny because I think that there's a sort of a preponderance of wanting to do wheat-based artwork in Wheat Ridge. And I think they were looking for something a little different. So the, what we did decide on is So what we did decide on is completely different from the three. This is the winning proposal, and you'll have to stick with me for a little bit. This is called Meccan and Celestial Vines. Tyler Foucault is out of, I want to say Pacific Northwest, I don't remember exactly where, but the meccan is basically a short name for a robot. So he is a friendly robot, and he is made out of recycled steel, so he's kind of eco-friendly. Tyler and his company, they are out of the Pacific Northwest, and they do work for Burning Man, and so they've done a number of these type of robots around the country, actually. So they're kind of a new thing. They're very young, they're very talented artists, and this is sort of, everybody got a little bit excited about having something that has not been done in Wheat Ridge before, or anywhere in Colorado for that matter. So he'll be about 15 feet tall. He's an ancient, he's friendly, and like we say, and I'll talk a little bit about some of his features, but he has a heart box, which is made with the input of the community. So each of these meccans have a different box on their chest, and it'll be made with the input from, they work with high schools, they can work with the community, they can kind of take little pieces of artwork or other things and put it inside. So these art boxes will be made in conjunction with the community. They also have illuminated eyes, and don't think that we're going to have a Mustang on our hands. They're friendly eyes, and they're meant to be, these meccans are supposed to be sort of guardians and helpers, more than they are sort of big scary robots. So each of these will be designed specifically, and they love working with the community. That was the exciting part. So these are what they proposed in other circumstances. So the piece on the left was what they proposed, and what it actually looks like in real life is the middle shot, and then you can see the one on the right-hand side shows the heart box, and so sort of how friendly they are. And then the celestial vines was kind of a really interesting thing. They want to be able to put these on the staircase as you come down from the pedestrian bridge and all the way down the trail. So these would be some sort of floral, they were very stringent in saying that these drawings are made in a computer, so they'll be much more sort of floral-looking. Right now, they're spheres, but I think that they were thinking about using color and using a lot of different types of imagery. I think someone even mentioned that this is the place where the old Jolly Rancher factory used to be, so could they be Jolly Rancher-colored or even Jolly Rancher, you know, shaped or something like that? It's completely up to the community at that point. So with no further ado, everybody was really wowed by the proposal. I think there are a lot of people who were kind of surprised by that, because they were thinking more along the lines of something more serious, but I think that the idea that this is the end of the line, people might travel out to see this. It makes the place feel a little more friendly, a little safer perhaps, and that it is low maintenance, and they love the idea that they're going to work with the community to have little pieces of it that will hearken to the neighborhood. And finally, also, this is one of the only places in Wheat Ridge that is sort of industrial, so they felt like the whole idea of a meccan in this industrial area that's sort of becoming new might be a nice reminder that it used to be that way. So I don't know if I have any more. So the next steps are, obviously, we've come from the cultural commission. They unanimously recommended it to move forward to you all, and so we come to you. Then, if you review and approve it, we'll move on to contract, design phase, they'll come visit the site, we'll talk about how we want to engage the community and where everything will go. The actual work doesn't start until the end of this year on the project, so we have plenty of time. Any questions, Councilman? Yeah? Yeah.
I was just curious, are the vines lit at all?
Right now, I don't think they are, but I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we can definitely recommend that they're lit. It really depends on where there's electricity available at the site, but the meccan himself will definitely be lit.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Just before we go to questions, I just want to make one comment that we had the public... pardon me, there was no one signed up from the public to speak on this tonight, so just wanted to make that, and then Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh my gosh, I love this so much, so much, so, so much. I've been so excited, like, tonight to come. Two things, I love bikes and art, and that's what we're talking about tonight. So first of all, I just really love that we're going for something interactive, both with our community, but for people who are going to be passing by. So I just think that this is just, it's a great selection, and I love that we're attracting so many, like, high-quality artists who are interested in responding to our proposals. And what kind of excites me about this is, some people in this room know this, when I travel, before I go, I actually make a Google map of all the public art I want to visit when I go to a new city. And so, like, pretty much any city I've traveled to in the United States, I've got a public art map, like, in my Google map. And what I do is, every chance I get, I go and I walk, and I go find a piece of public art that is of interest to me. And I'm sharing that, because I think this is actually the kind of art that people will actually come to see it, not just enjoy experiencing it when they're taking advantage of this opportunity across the railroad tracks, but it'll actually become a destination. And so I just, I love that our committee really, you know, thought boldly on this and kind of broke away from conventional art and really looked at engaging place-based art, and I think it's going to be really exciting for everybody when it comes online. So I just want to thank everyone who participated. Thank you, Counselor Oom. This is going to be super exciting, and I will be one of the first people to cross the bridge, so I think you're super excited, enthusiastic, yes, from me.
Thanks.
Counselor Oom.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Kendall, and the city. It was a wonderful experience to be on that, the café. You know, there are so many entries, and it's kind of daunting. It was a time commitment to go through and make a decision, and there were so many good ones that I thought would go forward, and some of mine that I thought would go forward didn't go forward. But so much talent, and it was a very, very smooth process. You know, we'd get through one hurdle, and then we had a little time to kind of digest and move through the next one. And that, I kind of felt like, as we got towards the end, there definitely was that community sense with this piece that, and that's what they said, this wasn't an ask that we were asking them to, that they volunteered that we really want to work with the community, and I felt that was really important. And I do see it as, this will be a destination piece, that we'll be the only ones in Colorado that will have this, and people will come to, you know, have their picture taken and want to travel to Wheat Ridge, and hopefully we can roll out the welcome mat and, you know, show them, you know, here's Wheat Ridge, the community and our businesses, and I think this will be a really nice piece. Thank you.
Thanks for helping us with the selection process. It was...
Mr. Mayor, quick point of order, please. We are actually in the question portion of this. The discussion happens after motion.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question about the selection process. Do you happen to know, just ballpark figure, a Counselor Oom might know this as well, how many Colorado or Wheat Ridge-based artists were in the running versus national artists?
Unfortunately, I don't know that. I remember looking, because I do like to track that kind of thing. Normally, when the budget goes up a little bit, it tends to attract attention, obviously at 169. So usually, there's about a half that are Colorado-based artists. Whether or not they're Wheat Ridge-based is a whole other. I would have had to ask for their zip codes, and that usually is not something that I track, to be honest. So usually, it's about half, and I don't know, Councilman, you might have taken a look at that more specifically because of the fact that you're representing Wheat Ridge, but I'm sorry that I don't have those numbers.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager Goff, can you just remind everybody where we get our money for these, for our public art, where the monies come from?
Sure. We have, in our public art management program, we have two different revenue sources. One is for projects in urban renewal areas, and we put 1% of the urban renewal project budget into public art. So the bridge and pedestrian trail is about $16 million budget, so 1% is $160,000. The other revenue source comes from private development across the community. We have 1% of fees for private development from plan review, I believe, permit fees goes into a fund also, and that can be used anywhere in the city.
Kendall, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I don't know if the Meachums are, when they get together, whether they're a troop or a pack or a den or a squad. How many Meachums, are we looking at Meachums down the pathway also, down the trail?
Just vines. Just the vines. So one meccan, and it's a meccan because it's short for mechanical, maybe?
Okay.
That's their name for them, so not robot. Yeah. So one big old robot made of recycled materials, and he'll be bulletproof, like, there's no maintenance, I have no maintenance concerns about him. And then the celestial vines, we have to figure out where those will be placed. So that'll be a matter of structural integrity on the walls and where we can place them. But the idea is that they would kind of grace the way up and then have some areas, and that the meccan will actually be holding one up to somebody as they cross the bridge, is what the idea is.
And on the vines, it's a bowl, and then it has some colorful things coming out of it that are sort of enameled or colorful?
Most likely, it'll be made of steel that's painted, maybe powder-coated, although powder coat doesn't stand the test of time the way just being able to paint them will. So it'll be an industrial-grade paint, and then, I don't know, the balls, the spheres that they had recommended may be mirror polished, but I think they were open to suggestion. So we'll have to kind of figure that out.
Okay. And then I noticed that some of the concepts, we've got a circle there to turn around in, and there was a focal point in the middle of the circle. We're not using that as a focal point. Is there something architecturally or landscape-wise that's happening in that circle?
That's a good question. I don't believe so. I think probably they'll place some landscaping. I think they kept it open for the very specific that if we did place artwork there, it would be open for it. But if they do, they might put some landscaping in. I think there was also some discussion around placing artwork in the circle, not wanting people to go out, especially if it's the meccan. People are going to want to touch it and be around it and take pictures around it. So placing it in the circle would probably be problematic, and people crossing traffic to get there. So I think that the idea that that will just be kind of a blank slate. Also, plowing, when people plow, that a lot of snow gets on the center of that, so...
Okay. And the meccan or meccan, I'm not sure with the correct pronunciation, pretty well anchored into the earth?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We'll engineer it. Every piece in the Wheat Ridge collection has to be engineered by a Colorado-certified engineer, so it'll be completely engineered and it'll be bulletproof. Like, you know, we want to make sure that it's for all the winds, all the hail, all the, you know, big guys that come and hang on it, you know, that kind of thing. So we want to make sure it's not going to fall over.
Thank you. Any additional questions before we go to a motion? Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And let's see, who's on deck for this? Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the public art selection titled "Mecan and Celestial Vines" by Tyler Foucault to be installed at the Wheat Ridge Ward TOD site.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Now, is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everybody that put their time in. I know these additional meetings with busy schedules are hard to do. I think you guys made a fabulous selection, and I appreciate that you guys are staying a little bit away from the wheat in some of our areas. We definitely have a lot of wheat throughout our community and being able to balance that out, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm as adept as an art critic, I suppose, as I am an engineer. But I did find this to be very interesting. When you think of the context where this is being placed, that pedestrian bridge is probably already very well described, because if you've ridden on RTD, you've seen the exact same bridge elsewhere in the metro area. And the idea of a 15-foot-tall robot handing a flower up to somebody walking over the bridge, I think, is unique, and so I really support what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Additional discussion on the motion. Counselor Oom.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope that this inspires other people to get on the cultural commission and be a part of that process. It was really great. Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, we will go to agenda item number three. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are considering a resolution. This is Resolution 152024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement and confirmation grant and conveyance of ditch right-of-way and easement with the Lee and Baw Ditch Company. At issue, the city is currently working towards the design and construction of a trail around Tabor Lake. The Lee and Baw Ditch Company has legal rights of way and easements to inspect, use, operate, maintain, and repair the ditch adjacent to Tabor Lake. This proposed license agreement would formalize and document the rights of both the ditch company and the city in the area near Tabor Lake and allow the city to install and maintain a non-motorized trail in this area.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, we have staff presentation on this.
We do. We've got Karen Adonal again, and our city attorney, I think, is going to help out.
I switched spots. Here I am. I just wanted to just give a brief background on why we're doing this now. We didn't have a formalized agreement, or at least not one that we could find, and in applying for land-water conservation dollars to complete the Tabor Lake project, which I think you're all pretty familiar with, completing a trail around the Tabor Lake, in order to receive funding in the amount of around $450,000, they wanted to be certain that we had a formalized agreement with the Lee and Baw Ditch Company. So it sounds like they love our proposal, fingers crossed, but this is the final step in obtaining funding for that project.
And I can add that the agreement that you have is similar to others the city's entered into with ditch companies when it has been necessary for the city to build or maintain or change one of its, usually, bridges or roads that cross over ditches throughout the city, and you're well aware, there are lots of them. And I will compliment the company for receiving and taking and accepting a number of the changes that often I, to be blunt, fight with ditch companies about in doing these agreements. I try not to be in the position of having the city grant sort of additional rights beyond whatever the ditch company has historically, and many of these ditches were just built, and they have under the law kind of a prescriptive right to be there. When you enter into agreements with them, they try to improve that right a little bit, kind of while they're at it, and I understand that. But the ditch company's been actually pretty good to work with and took my changes. The one point, I guess I would make, that was important to them is the commencement and timing of the work, and not uncommonly, the ditch companies will ask that the work take place during the non-irrigation season. I absolutely understand that. We were able to accommodate that, and that's in the agreement. And other than that, I'm happy to answer questions, but it's a form of agreement that I support.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I will note that no members of the public have signed up to speak on this, so now we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first question I had does regard your conversations with the ditch company. Are they generally all right with what we're proposing?
Yes, I think they are, and Karen might have something to add, but I didn't get the kind of pushback I often do get. I'm not quite sure if I've gotten it from Lee and Baw before, but I think I have, actually, in the past. But no, they were actually pretty cooperative and accepted the changes that I asked for. They get really solid rights in this agreement. They're granting the city the license, the privilege to do this over their easement, and so we're actually the licensee, you know, in that sense. And even though we're the party that actually owns the... even though we're the party that actually owns the, the land by and large, we're a licensee to the, to the district. We indemnify them. We cover all the costs. If they need to move their facilities in any way, it's on the city to accommodate that and to move its, its trail. So it's, it's, they're well protected. But having said that, they didn't push back with, in some ways that I expected them to. And so that's why it's a reasonable agreement, given the, the nature of the interaction between cities and ditch companies. And that's just true up and down the front range. Some relationships are better than others, but this is actually a fairly good outcome.
And, and then to follow up on that, you did mention that the part of the agreement says that this, the work on the trail would not have an impact on the ditch, on, on flow on the ditch. And I did a quick check and it looks like they, they average about 200 acre feet per year, roughly. And I would, and that's seasonal, obviously, from around now right through October. So does that mean that the construction work on the trail will be limited to the times when the ditch is not flowing?
Yes, that's right. So after the irrigation season is over, it's, the non-irrigation season's November to March. So that will be, I think, given the nature of this work, plenty of time for the city to yet have done, even though it's during winter months, there's going to be, the, the construction operations for the trail itself aren't that complicated. So I don't think there will be a difficulty, the city getting its work done during the non-irrigation season.
And obviously with a ditch that's connected with the original Baugh farm, the City of Wheat Ridge wants to be pretty careful with how we manage that.
Yes, that's, that's true. I think they've well protected themselves and we're obliged under the agreement to continue to protect their interests. So there, there shouldn't be a complaint from them.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions before I ask for motion? Seeing none, we'll take a motion from Mr. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 152024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement and confirmation grant and conveyance of ditch right-of-way and easement with the Lee and Baugh Ditch Company.
Second.
Second by Counselor Rome. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. That completes our action items. I'll go now to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Just to remind our residents, Benny mentioned this earlier, but we are having a branch drop-off site again for this last windstorm, April 12th, and April 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Anderson Park. And then you may have seen in the paper over the weekend, unfortunately, the proposed Livslow Brewery and Bowling Alley at Gold's Market is, is not coming. However, we were told by the landlord that as soon as that was announced, they've received significant interest from many other potential tenants. So I don't think it'll be too long before that, that is filled. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Matters?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll go with to elected officials matters and start with Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Number one, lots of high winds and possible power outages over the weekend. So I hope everyone's doing well and power back on. Thanks to Parks and Rec for the limb drop this, this coming weekend with, at Anderson Park. I just wanted to also just call out really quickly, at the beginning of our meeting, we had the, a note about the animal control and care officers. And I just wanted to kind of give them kudos in general. That team, I had the pleasure of working with them for several years when I worked for Local Works and organizing the cleanup days. And what an incredible group of people. Like, they wear 10,000 hats each and they do so much. And they're so thoughtful in the way that they carry out their duties. And so I just wanted to, to give another mention to our, our community service officers. They are, they're a great team. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happiness Gardens report, Regenerate Wheat Ridge has a class this Wednesday morning at Happiness Gardens, and I will be there. And there continue just to be lots of little improvements. There's like a big kind of shelf thing that got installed there that I'm curious what the, the use is. But every time I walk by, there's something new at Happiness Gardens. I really appreciate that. And I was really happy when I walked by yesterday that there were no, the beloved old plum tree was still standing. On that note, I was one of many people in our city who didn't have power for about 32 hours over the weekend. And I realize that is, you know, not at the fault of the city. I was, like many of my neighbors, on Excel's website. Like, I was, you know, just constantly refreshing. And it wasn't even until 7:00 o'clock yesterday that I even saw some indication of when service might return. And so I, I know that this weekend was unprecedented. But I'm just curious, what, what communication does the city get from Excel on things like this? I mean, I just was really worried. Like, there were, like, you know, 1,300 outages and managing that number is like unprecedented. But I'm just wondering, like, what, what is the arrangement? I had a lot of neighbors that were, of course, reaching out to me, asking me for updates. And I was like, I know what you do. I'm just on the website. So.
Maybe Maria has some information too. But I, I was a little surprised with this storm this weekend. We typically get overly communicated with, with, we have a government liaison that we work with on many issues when it comes to Excel. And during the winter time, when there's potential power outages, we're getting, I'm getting emails throughout, throughout the day. I didn't get any for this storm. So I was a little surprised by that. The communication wasn't as good for this. I'm not sure if Maria's got anything there.
Yeah, I didn't get any for this storm either. Yeah. And normally we do. So in preparation for the large snowstorm, they were, our liaison was communicating with us regularly, but unfortunately they were not. I'm assuming they were focused on kind of up in the Boulder area instead. But yeah, we did have significant number of, and still do here in the immediate area as well as through Lakewood and west to Golden. I still have a number of outages going on.
Okay. Well, when, when you have a chance, Patrick, if you could let them know that, I mean, like, I didn't even, literally the first communication I got from them was about 20 minutes before they turned my power back on and it had been like 30 hours. So I realized the scale's unprecedented, but I just, we had a lot of residents that were really frustrated with the lack of information. So if you can pass that along, it'd be helpful.
Will do.
And then I just want to congratulate, I went to the ribbon cutting for the cutting room and I realize it's a District III business, but the owner is a District II resident, Hin Haddar, who has cut my hair and my son's hair for years. And she, I just was so excited when she was ready to open her own salon. She really wanted to, you know, bring her big idea to Wheat Ridge and, and invest in us so that we can invest in her. So I wish her the best. It's a just darling salon and she is just a gracious and very talented hair stylist. So I recommend anyone who's looking for a great haircut to go check out the cutting room. You won't be disappointed. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to defer discussion about the, I thought, very successful community event we had to Counselor Dozeman. And I do have a few thoughts on the response to the power outages. And I'm going to hold those till, till later.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to thank all of the residents that came out to our District Four meeting on April 2nd. We had a pretty decent showing of District Four residents and also residents from other districts. So appreciated the conversation and the presentations by the Wheat Ridge Police Department, PIO Alex Rose, and also Lutheran on just next steps as far as the project goes. And then, of course, Paige Piper spoke a little bit about the Clear Creek Maker Space, which we are very excited about as a new tenant in District Four. I hope everybody enjoyed the solar eclipse today. I got out during lunch and was able to see a bit of it. So it's very fascinating to me. Was very grateful that I had that opportunity today. And then I was also among the thousands of residents that were without power and was equally frustrated with the lack of communication or miscommunication because I thought our power was going to be on last night at about 10:15, which I was highly skeptical of because of the damage that was done and the large metal tent from Young's Market that had to be removed from the, the power lines and that blew the transformer. So I'm very, very grateful that there was not a fire in conjunction with that. But I did appreciate that our power got turned on. I know that this was an unprecedented event. And driving through Wheat Ridge this morning, I saw all of the lights along 32nd that were off. And so I, I recognized that the traffic lights and, and public safety is first priority. And so I know Excel had a lot to juggle the, over the last couple of days. But yeah, it was a little frustrating and even more frustrating to hear of the lack of communication. I appreciated that question from Councilmember Holte because I was equally curious as to what communication there was between Excel and the city and events of this nature. But yeah, I will defer any other things that maybe come to mind until after the study session. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. I also wanted to just call out the animal control and our community service officers because especially in an event like we had over the weekend, I, I also want to thank all of the community members who called me personally to ask how my animals were and everything. But there's just so much care that all of those officers give to our, our extended animal family. And I just really, really appreciate that, that, that they, they treat everybody. Just their expertise is second to none. So thank you to the police department.
Thank you. Counselor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the, the ribbon cutting. I believe it was Thursday with the mayor and Councilmember Larson. It was at Legal Pete's and it was a really nice ceremony. I was kind of surprised that the owner, Pete, had not ever done a ribbon cutting in his tenure as a business owner. And he was really excited that we were there and, you know, wanted the pictures, to make sure the pictures were just right. And it's, it's a great asset to the city. It's really been a catalyst for the other businesses. I've heard other businesses say that that's really helping to pull in, pull in traffic and, and people. And, you know, sorry that Livslow isn't, isn't working out, but I think, I'm hoping that that'll turn around a lot faster than we've been waiting for Livslow to come in. And then I also wanted to point out a teacher, Ms. Binford. About a year ago, I can't remember how the conversation started, but it was when I kind of first got elected and I talked to a teacher, Ms. Binford at the high school who teaches agriculture. And we started chatting. I could tell she was very, very passionate about what she does with her students. And, and so I decided that as a city council member, I wanted to give some of my community funds. So I went to the classroom and I did that and they were very thankful. They sent me, I received a lot of thank you notes in my post office box here. And then she's, she's very good. She, we started chatting. She asked me to come in to teach as a landscape architect. As most of you know, I'm a licensed landscape architect. And I, I couldn't say no. This is for the community. And so I thought, okay, I committed that. And then she said for three classes. And so, so last Friday, and then she asked me, she's like, do you have a PowerPoint? And so she's, she's really good at, you know, asking for things. And it was a great honor. It's rare to have a teacher that really inspires the kids, is very passionate. And she was. And so I had the honor of teaching those three different classes on Friday. And she, it was the first time I've ever really taught a class, especially three classes in the same day. And she told me, she's like, now you got a little taste of what it's like to be a teacher. And, and yes, I did. And it definitely gave you some perspective on, you know, what teachers have to do every day. And, you know, there are a lot of students that were, you know, they were interested in, you know, doing landscape design. And, and hopefully it also sends a message to the community, you know, that this, this is Wheat Ridge and, you know, what you want. We want our, you know, our students, you know, and our community to do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Potemstite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention the ribbon cutting at Illegal Pete's. I, I missed it by that much the other day. I was at an elementary school teaching, but I was able to make the ribbon cutting at the cutting room. And that's a, it's a beautiful shop in there. And, and they put on a great, great ribbon cutting. And I also wanted to acknowledge all the Excel workers. I know the communication hasn't been great, but they've been out working extremely hard over the last couple of days, trimming trees and, and putting branches back up and, or, you know, whatever they need to do. But one of the cool things I saw the last couple of days is driving around the city in my neighborhood, there was a couple of, one side of the street had power, the other side didn't, which that's, that's no fun, watching that. But, but people were running extension cords across the street from one side of the street to the other to make sure that they had power on the other side. And I thought that was really cool. I saw trees that were down and neighbors were getting out with chainsaws and chopping them up and, and getting rid of them as fast as they could. So it's just really cool to see when neighbors are out there helping each other. So in addition, I, I want to thank a lot of the local businesses in the area who, who maybe didn't have power the last couple of days. I know a couple of restaurants met it, lost some revenue for brunch and all that stuff, but hopefully they're back up and running. And if you can find it, you should buy it in Wheat Ridge and make sure that they can help recover as quickly as they can. Thank you.
Thank you. I, really a pleasure to, to help cut a ribbon at Illegal Pete's and the cutting room. Great, great new businesses coming into Goldsmith Shopping Center. I want to do a shout out to the Wheat Ridge Business Association, the Wheat Ridge Chamber, the city staff and all of the folks who, who come to these ribbon cuttings and really make it a festive event. I think the merchants really appreciate it. And we really, we're having some good times. Pete was there and Repeat was there. And we, we really had a good, a good time. This Saturday, I'll be having coffee with the mayor at Vanola's at 9:00, Vanola's Italian Deli. And I want to do a little special shout out to Muriel Frank. I went over to see Muriel this Saturday to help her celebrate her 103rd birthday. So she, she's in District One and has been a long time Wheat Ridge resident and, and is just a really great lady. And, and Muriel, if you're still watching tonight, happy birthday again, because we had a great time. So is, there's nothing to come before council meeting tonight. We're going to adjourn maybe for about five or seven minutes and then come back to a special study session. So, three minutes? Oh, you guys are quick. Okay, we'll be, I'm going to adjourn. We'll be back soon. Thank you. To call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April the 8th, 2024. We have two items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the Lutheran Legacy Campus, a zone change and charter amendment discussion. Item number two is the city's response to traffic issues. We have already invited members of the public to speak on this and had some great comments back. So we will continue right on with item number one. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on the site?
We do. I'm gonna go ahead and just turn it right over to Lauren McLeck. She'll... Yep, got your presentation up. They're Community Development Director.
Okay. Director McLeck.
Thank you. Good evening. All right. I have been thinking a lot about the Lutheran Legacy Campus over the last couple of months, and I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to discuss it with you all. It's been a little while since we talked about the Legacy Campus. It's been two and a half years since we adopted the master plan. With the hospital move feeling a lot more imminent, I think we're getting a lot of people who are wondering what's next, what's going to happen at the campus, a little bit of fear of what it looks like when it's not occupied on a day-to-day basis at the same level that it is today. And I want to talk a little bit about some options that we have in terms of how the city could have more or less of a role in advancing some next steps for that campus. So I'm going to start with the timeline, one slide, pretty brief, a recap on what was in the master plan, because it's been a couple of years. And then we'll talk about next steps, what they are and what the city's role could be. You saw those three options outlined in the memo. I'll just breeze through that. Our guiding question for tonight, should have put this in the memo, but I thought about it today. Our guiding question is what role, if any, do we want the city to have in furthering the implementation of the adopted master plan? So that, quick timeline. So in the Wayback Machine in 2020, it was COVID. The medical campus was owned by SCL Health. They were in the middle of getting approvals for their new hospital campus at Clear Creek Crossing. And a little bit of a surprise to us at the city, they came to us in the fall of 2020 and said, we're ready to put the Legacy Campus on the market. When we learned that, we asked them to actually slow down that process of marketing the site. I think you know, the campus right now is only zoned for medical use. And when any property goes on the market, a hospital or a house, prospective buyers call planners and say, what can we do? What is the city's vision? What can the zoning be? And because we didn't have a guiding document for this property and we needed one, SCL was a really great partner in being open to learning about what a master plan is and how it could add value to the future of their property and the value of a community process. So you might recall that the city and SCL actually jointly selected a consultant team. SCL paid for the master planning process. Our staff managed the process. And together, we facilitated a public process to get community input on what Wheat Ridge wants that campus to look and feel and be like for the next many, many decades, when it's no longer only a medical campus. That master plan was adopted in October of 2021, so almost exactly two and a half years ago. Shortly after that, SCL merged with Intermountain Health. Doesn't really impact the master plan, but I do think it sort of paused their timeline as their leadership changed a little bit. Council did a great job of a quick, low-hanging fruit follow-up action right after the plan was adopted and did a resolution that encouraged future owners to make a good faith effort to reuse the chapel, the blue house, and the tuberculosis tent. Those had been key considerations and big-ticket items for the public. And then over the last couple of years, I would say the city, especially the building division and the Intermountain team, has been focused on that new hospital campus. Had less action on the Legacy Campus, except for the urban renewal plan that you saw last month, which we created to allow for tax increment financing, which will really allow us to achieve some of the community benefits that are called for in that master plan. And then lastly, on the schedule, looking forward a little bit, the hospital move is real and it's imminent, coming in August of 24. Again, just a quick reminder of what the master plan contained. This is the cover sheet. The entire document for you and for the public is on whatsupwheatridge.com/lutheran. This document, it's long, it's a lot of text, but fundamentally, it is setting expectations both for the future buyer, for the development community, and for our community to understand what do we expect to see out there. It outlines visions and goals, key considerations, community priorities. It's exciting. It really was a tremendous turnout. You heard earlier, as a reminder, it was during sort of the roller coaster of COVID. So it was the first planning process that we have where we didn't exclusively rely on in-person. It was really robust. It was hybrid. Some was in-person, some was online. And my biggest takeaway and excitement was that the community really realized too, sort of what a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, a campus of this size in the middle of our city is when we're dreaming big about the future. The next three images, I think, do a better job of all of the text, of summarizing where we landed. The first one up is our development framework. And this has two important colors. The biggest takeaway from the master plan is that we sort of articulated a trade-off, recognizing that in yellow, we expect as a community to see lower densities, lower heights, and open space on the perimeter, a good transition zone to our existing neighborhoods. And in trade, in the purple, we expect that there'd be a mix of uses, higher densities, more flexibility in the middle of the campus. Those next series of images, suitability maps, this gets a little bit more specific. The master plan doesn't identify specific uses. It doesn't create site plans, but it does try to identify appropriate locations for certain types of uses and building types. So, for example, if retail were to come to the campus, that red shading area shows where it could be appropriate. And if office were to remain or be added in the future, it'd be in that purple area. And then jumping down to that bottom row, that really reflects that framework map. So lower density would be appropriate on the perimeter and higher uses and intensities would be appropriate in the middle. And then the last graphic I want to share is our sort of a zone map. I don't want to say zone and confuse it with zoning, but it breaks the property into four smaller geographies. So it's a 100-acre campus. That's about the same size as Clear Creek Crossing. It's big. I think it was like 12 city blocks is the equivalent. The campus has an existing road network. It's private roads. That's the wishbone shape in the middle. The Rocky Mountain Ditch crosses at the angle. That's the diagonal between Zones Two and Three. And there's a significant change in topography. And in combination, those features, the road, the ditch, and the topo really elegantly and naturally divide the site into four zones. And so the master plan described really specific considerations for each of those zones. What uses should be there? What are the building typologies? How do those zones relate to the adjacent neighborhoods or other areas? That's a very Cliff Notes version of a 100-page document and a year-long planning process. I want to step back for just a second. I think some of you have probably seen this graphic. I've used it in a few different ways. And I think it does a pretty good job of illustrating the relationship between planning, zoning, and how we get the outcomes or the built environment that we want to see in Wheat Ridge. So when we talk about planning, we're talking about long-range planning documents, 10, 20, 30-year horizons, dreaming big, articulating what we want the city to look and feel like. In the specific instance of the Lutheran master plan, it was dreaming big and answering those questions specifically for this campus. That's why it's so important to have public engagement during a planning process. Zoning is the link between our guiding documents and the real-world built environment that we see around us. I can explain almost any physical thing on private property by pointing to a rule in the zoning code in Wheat Ridge. And so zoning translates our vision into a set of rules and regulations. And theoretically, as development occurs over time, so long as your zoning is calibrated to your vision, it will result in a built environment, businesses, homes, corridors, open space that reflect our desired character. The city has control over the first two. We have control over planning. We have control over zoning. Typically, we let the market bring to us the development that complies with our plans and our zoning rules. So what does that mean for Lutheran? Where do we have the ability to potentially exert a little more control if we want to? How do we convert this vision to action? The master plan outlines in sort of the very last chapter, specific next steps. Talked about an urban renewal plan. That's in motion. We're not going to belabor that anymore. It acknowledges that we'll be waiting for a developer partner. The city has never intended to purchase or develop this land. The plan acknowledges that we'll need a charter change to reflect that yellow-purple trade-off if we're going to be lower and less intense in the perimeter. The project really only pencils if we can cluster some more height or intensity in the middle. And the plan certainly acknowledges that the zoning has to change. This is now the document against which we will assess a potential zone change. So the question that our team has really been thinking about lately is how do we keep this moving forward? What could the city's role be in moving this forward? We haven't seen any action for the last couple of years, probably for a variety of reasons. But how can we ensure that this master plan is achieved in action? Intermountain Health certainly controls the sale of the land, but the city could be in a lead role as it relates to the zoning and the charter. So I want to talk about those two things, charter and then zoning, and then our three options, and then we can have a quick discussion. So I think you all know that the Wheat Ridge City Charter establishes height and density caps. These are pretty unique. These caps were established in the 1980s largely in reaction to the Highlands West Building at 38th and Kendall. It's, I think, 11 stories high. And so our charter says that density is capped at 21 units per acre. Density is not on the table. We're not going to talk about, nor do I think we need to exempt Lutheran campus from density, but just know that that exists. For Lutheran, the charter caps any building with a residential use at 35 feet. So that could be a single-unit detached home, a townhome. Or the reason that we don't see first-floor commercial and residential above is because it's almost impossible to build that within 35 feet. The charter also sets a height limit of 50 feet for any building that doesn't include a residential use. Obviously, the buildings on the hospital campus are a little bit bigger. Many of those were built before that cap existed. We do have the ability to exempt certain areas of our city from those caps. And we did that in 2009. So voters approved exemption of the Wadsworth area from about 35th to 45th. We exempted the height and density caps. We did the same thing for the I-7 and Kipling Urban Renewal Area. So that's Clear Creek Crossing. That's the area by the train station, the area around I-7 and Kipling. If we pursued that option for the Lutheran campus, we'd be focused really on that middle purple portion where the plan calls for higher-density uses and commercial uses to be clustered so that we can achieve through this trade-off the better transition to our existing neighbors. Ballot questions take time. You have put questions on the ballot in the past. That's usually a four-month work-back schedule to craft the language, to approve it by ordinance, to submit it to the county. Usually, in Wheat Ridge history, we put ballot questions on in November, little bit better turnout, less expensive to the city. We don't usually rely on special elections. Shifting gears for a second, zoning. So you are familiar with zone changes. Zoning, again, is the rulebook. It's the link between the vision and the built environment. And as you know, we have base zone districts, so R1, C1, mixed use, and then we have planned developments. There are actually two types of zone change processes. 99% of the zone changes ever entertained in this room have been private zone change requests. Those are quasi-judicial. There's a specific set of procedural rules. It's usually a property owner or a buyer who's requesting a zone change. They come to us. The city responds. We write a staff report. We analyze that request against our guiding documents. And decision-makers, you all and Planning Commission, act like judges. So you can't discuss the zone change outside of this room with each other, with the public. All of that discussion takes place during the single public hearing. We have another tool. We don't use it very often. We have used it before. But a legislative rezoning is in our code. It's a city-initiated zone change where the city really gets the chance to take the lead on zoning property. It can be one parcel. It could be many parcels. Usually, this happens for the express purpose of implementing an adopted plan. So we did that on Wadsworth and we did that on 38th Avenue in 2012. Both of those corridors have sub-area plans. And we rezoned those areas with the specific purpose of trying to, one, catalyze private development. A lot of people don't want to take the time to do a zone change. They're looking for properties that are zoned appropriately. And number two, to really further the vision that we had in those adopted plans. So for a city-initiated zone change, the process is a little different. We get to design the public process. You get to participate in the public process. And that means also in discussions about what the zoning is, discussions with the community, and discussions during the public hearing. So what could that all mean for Lutheran? Again, the guiding question tonight is what, if any, role do we want the city to have in furthering the implementation of the Lutheran master plan? So we have three options in the memo, sort of do nothing, proactive charter question, or city-initiated zone change and charter question. So these two things are, in my mind, really inextricably linked. We know, you heard from Intermountain Health staff just last month, that they intend to start gauging developer interest. Sort of neither here nor there that it's waited two and a half years, but we've been in this do-nothing mode for two and a half years. Not much has happened. We can continue to wait for them to gauge that interest, see who sort of percolates, see what they're interested in. They can come to us. They can propose a zone change. We'd respond. Our staff give comments. You see the staff report. It would be quasi-judicial. In this scenario, I would guess that the potential buyer would also want a charter question. We'd probably wait to let the zone change play out and then do the charter question after. It's probably our longest timeline. There's some unpredictability. We don't know how the market will shift, if at all, over the next couple of years. This is what happened at Clear Creek Crossing. And that's okay. It took a while. Our first go at Clear Creek Crossing was 2005. And then it wasn't until 2018 where we had a zoning come to us where we felt like it implemented our vision. It's a long time. It's fine. It's a choice. Option two is slightly more proactive. This would be where we go ahead as a city and proactively put a charter question on the ballot. The reason that I think there, one of the reasons you would do this is that I think there are probably some good developer partners who will hesitate to even think about looking at the Lutheran campus with the uncertainty of whether or not our community will modify the charter cap in that middle portion of the site. We did this in 2009, right? We did this in Wadsworth and the I-7 and Kipling areas. All we had at that time was a comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge that said, we want to cluster density and growth in these two areas. And voters ran with that and did approve a ballot question without a lot more detail. That may happen in this case, or it may be that the community wants a little bit more information. So door number three is the city-initiated zoning and charter change. We could take the lead role on both. So I think the master plan, it's not a site plan, but I do think that it gives us more than enough information to develop the rulebook, the zoning rules, that would achieve that vision. We have staff who are really good at writing zoning rules. Under this option, the zone change would be legislative. So it could be a community conversation. It could include the public, the current owner, potential future owners, you all. We can advance a ballot question at the same time so people understand how they're related and the trade-off that could exist. You heard in public comment, I think we have lost some momentum. I think we have new residents who aren't as familiar. I know we have some education to... I know we have some education to do, and I think we'll be more successful in educating that when it can be an open public dialogue versus a quasi-judicial private zone change. Not to say everybody loves this, but I do think that when we were doing the master plan, everybody saw something they loved in that document. So it's really these three options. The third option, I do, you know, the crystal ball is hazy, but to the extent there's a concern that the property sits vacant and underutilized, I think the do-nothing could be the longest duration of that time, and the city-initiated could shorten that up a little bit. Development will take time. There's no question about it, but certainly it would reduce that entitlement phase a little bit. It's these three options that we're seeking feedback on tonight. There's no right or wrong answer. There's sort of considerations and pros and cons, but the more we thought about it as a staff, the more we felt compelled to bring it forward as an option in case we wanted to catalyze what's happening out there. Anything to add from, okay? We're open for questions.
Thank you very much. Councilor Weaver.
Thanks so much for the presentation. Just not together tonight. I just want to apologize to everybody. I'm dropping things. I'm asking questions out of time. To me, I feel like there's really only one option, and I just want to be supportive of the city-initiated zone change and charter question, simply because the do-nothing, I think we have seen the reaction of what that happens. And certainly, at our district meeting, we heard a lot of worry, and I think completely reasonable worry about what a chained-up property looks like and how long that exists in a community. And so for me, the do-nothing, I am very concerned about that property being vacant and feeling like it's not, nothing's happening. The proactive charter question, number two, I'm not crazy about because I think we've gone through lots of private zone changes, and we do that all of the time. And we've also seen a battleground in this room around those things. And so I feel like re-engaging with the community and sort of going back to that place where we created that master plan, that makes sense. And then combining it with the charter, that just feels like a way that everybody can get together in the same room, and we can talk about these things and, to your point, re-educate ourselves about the whole process. So thanks for bringing this forward. I support number three. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just like to agree with Councilwoman Weaver on the do-nothing. We saw that, you know, at Clear Creek Crossing, we saw a lot of potential ins and outs. There was a lot of push and pull because we didn't have a real plan up there, and so we had people coming in and wanting to, really, really high demands of our community, and those didn't really work out. The private, the number-two proactive charter question, I find it really hard to ask our voters to exempt something if they don't know what it looks like. And so, you know, that's kind of the blink-check analogy, and I don't appreciate that one. The city-initiated zone change and charter question, so there's a few, what I think are the best pros about this. Time is money when people are buying a property this large with this large of a ticket, and they don't just have that money in their back pocket. And so, you know, as soon as they have their approval to spend that money, and then they get the land, and then they're waiting more than a year to do something with it, it costs them money just to carry it. It also gives us the opportunity to write more detailed what we want on that. I think plan development overlay and new zone district were all options in the memo. I think an overlay would be absolutely fantastic for this area, and it gives the developers an idea of what we will tolerate here. So don't even waste our time. Don't waste the Planning Commission's time. Don't waste our community's time when you think that we're going to put, you know, ten high-rises there. It's not going to happen. And then it allows for the community input, and doing the two things at the same time is really walking and chewing gum at the same time. So we can, you know, for something to be successful on the ballot for our charter, right, which I would like to mention, I think we are one of two communities in Colorado that have height and density in their charter, and I think the other one is like a small, little jeeping community down in southwest Colorado. So, and it was done in the 80s, right? So is it still relevant these days with the landscapes we're looking at? Probably not, but making charter changes is serious to our community, and for them to be able to have a part of that, to be in that conversation with us about what does this charter change actually look like down the road, I think is important. So I absolutely support number three. I think it is our best option to get the best development we can there.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, looking at number one, and especially, Lauren, when you put Clear Creek Crossing in perspective at 2005, when they initially do-nothing just doesn't seem like an option because it was one thing when Clear Creek Crossing sat empty. It was on the far outskirts of town. It wasn't there. This is here. This is in the middle of our city. And if we have to board up that campus or a good chunk of that campus and put construction fences up, which has been described, and just slowly kind of watch that area deteriorate over the next couple of years, I think that's not going to work well for our city. I mean, I understand that it might feel, and I had this conversation with the city manager Goff a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, he was kind of laying this out for me, and, you know, I had the same feeling that I think a lot of the residents here had a little bit of our district meeting and might hear after hearing this is, oh, my goodness, it feels like it's going so fast now. But, I mean, in all reality, 2020 was almost, you know, four years ago, four and a half years ago. You know, the process, but we have a lot of new people in the community. So like you said, getting people re-engaged and understanding what's going on, and that even though there was some dead time, it's time to move forward, I think is really important. So I would support moving forward with number three, and I think it's, you know, it's always frustrating for, I think, us when we read the material, when we're doing zoning changes, but then we hear the rumor mill going out in the community, and we can't say anything about it. And this gives us the opportunity to really get out in the community and have those conversations with the people who are probably the most concerned. And I think as Councilor Weaver and I, you know, this is in our district, so most of those people, you know, it'll touch District Two a little bit, but most of those people in District Three are in that area very concerned, and they want to know what's going on. So I feel better about being able to have meetings and have conversations with those guys and help them design, you know, the right zoning and the right rules for this to be a win-win for them and for the city. So, and I would support putting that charter question on the ballot. Coming out of our council retreat last year, we had talked about putting two things on the ballot either this year, next year, in the next couple of years. One of them was the clerk and treasurer as an elected versus appointed, or right now they're elected. We talked about putting it on the ballot. That would be a charter change. The other one is just some general cleanup for the charter, and I think Mr. Dahl might have some ideas for that, but right now, our charter is completely male, and there's some cleanup from the mayor, strong mayor change a few years ago. So that we had talked about maybe putting those on the ballot, too. So that is also part of the discussion, too, because these things can't go on the ballot in a vacuum. If that's something we want to move forward with, we have to decide if we want to do that in three, if we want to do just one or two of those questions. But I would definitely move forward with number three. And then for me, if we look at that, I would look at maybe holding off on the clerk and treasurer conversation for another year and then doing the language cleanup with this one. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's have a couple of questions. What if, when we're talking about option three, like, can you talk me through what the timeline for that would look like?
Sure. I mean, we're in control of the pace. Certainly, the charter is the one that's tied to the calendar. So if we were to try to do a charter question on November's ballot, the typical work-back schedule would be to have that language done in the summer, July, August-ish, and then have your first and second reading ordinance to submit it to the county clerk in time. That means, I don't think the zone change needs to be done before a November ballot, but I want, I would want to have the zone change conversation and the re-education on the master plan be happening as soon as possible so that folks felt informed enough by November to understand what was on the table. And then we'd come and present the zoning more formally once we had an outcome from the ballot question. So I think we could have it done, what is it, April, within a year, less, hopefully, by the end of this year. The fact that we're engaging a lot of people on a lot of things this year lets us piggyback one more topic on an engaged audience. Yeah, I haven't laid out a very specific timeline, but if the direction tonight was to move forward with number three, we'd be having a huddle by the end of the week on what that would look like.
Okay. Yeah, so I am sort of curious, too, like, how this conversation would intersect with, like, city plan? And if you really feel like, does, do they, like, support one another, or does it create any confusion and muddying the water in terms of, like, implementing one plan and creating a different one?
Yeah.
And any, yeah, just sort of curious what your thoughts are in terms of how the intersectionality of those two processes would work.
Sure. It's a good question. You'll see next week in our study session and our public meeting, one of the first questions we're asking is what are the big things we need to get right over the next 20 years? And from our steering committee conversations and internal, I think one of those big things is still Lutheran, and I think we actually help sort of relieve the community to think about other big things if we start moving forward the master plan that we've already spent a lot of time and community time creating. So I think they work really well in tandem. I think they work really well in proving what we've done over the last few years of saying we will take action on the things that you've told us. So I feel confident that we can educate and communicate sort of what a plan, I actually think it helps the city plan because it shows what planning efforts do. It very clearly shows the outcome of a planning effort. So we told our city plan consultant that this may be coming and that we'll just sort of have more booths in all the city plan meetings where you go to talk about Lutheran, the one, you know, if that's on your mind, and feel free to talk about all the other things once we can sort of get that off the radar.
Thanks. That's helpful. So a couple of thoughts, like, I feel a little murky on this for a couple of reasons. I have a discomfort with the do-nothing in part because we, you know, nobody likes a vacant, underutilized lot, and we have a real housing need. Dr. Cog's housing assessment is showing we have a need at both ends of the spectrum, and I think that this Lutheran project actually has the opportunity for us to really continue to contribute regionally to a very real housing crisis. And of course, we always want to be, you know, more in control than not in terms of the vision on this. I, you know, anytime we bring up, like, a charter question, I mean, just as a reminder, you know, the majority of our residents have not lived here 10 years or longer, so institutional knowledge for us is new to them. And we've lost a little momentum on the Lutheran thing, so I think, you know, to really re-engage people, it's going to take some effort. I think when I was talking with Mayor Protem Stites about this, I think the question that comes to my mind immediately is, can we do some polling to understand, like, what is our community's understanding of what, you know, a charter amendment is and what's their appetite for really being able to discern, like, the question that we'd be putting forward to them? When we brought 2J forward last year, we just had this really clear direction from our community, both through the survey and from the Let's Talk. Like, it was really clear, like, they were telling us the question that they wanted to see on the ballot, but we did polling that really brought it back strongly for us. So if we're going to look at putting it on the ballot this fall, I would really like to see some polling so that we could really understand, because what I don't want to do is botch it. And if we don't do it right, we could actually be doing worse than doing nothing. And that's just a risk that I just want to, you know, make sure we're mitigating through better understanding, you know, because what we do is we hear from the people who are most affected by it. And when I was walking for Councilor Larson this year, you know, and in my district, Lutheran is like a very hot topic, and so, but that's an isolated portion of the city. We would be voting city-wide on this. So I think it's really important for us to understand the voting public's appetite for this. So I think if we had some direction through polling that, you know, they understand what we're asking and the importance of it, I think that would be really helpful. I think either way, you know, the doing nothing just doesn't seem like where we want to be. So I think we really should be trying to reignite the momentum around Lutheran regardless and getting people, you know, back in the driver's seat in terms of, like, this is a community-driven process, like, you know, I think we did a great job on the master plan, and I think it's a great master plan. And the other thing I think about is, a lot of times through the zoning negotiations on these big parcels, like, it's our opportunity to negotiate with developers. And so doing legislative zoning, we kind of lose some of that, so we really want to make sure that that rezoning, we're really clear on what it is that we want to see there. Because once we do that, we've then advocated some of our negotiation. So I'd want to make sure that we're giving enough time for that process to really, like, fulfill that vision because I think we're, these are the right things for us to do, and I think as the city, we want to be in that driver's seat. But we, yeah, we just don't want to misstep on it. And so I would just really love to see some polling, and then I'd really love to make sure that if we're doing the legislative rezoning, that we're not, you know, missing the opportunity to negotiate in the things that are most important to us as a city. So that's where I'm landing on this. Thanks.
If I could respond to two of the things you brought up just briefly, it can be hard to get people engaged, but when the hospital physically moves in a moment in time, in the first week of August, it feels like a great opportunity that everybody will be paying attention for a minute. So for a little while, I was feeling guilty that hindsight's 20/20. Why didn't I bring this up earlier? I never thought of it earlier. It feels like it's all sort of coming together at the right moment, and to the extent people are saying, well, when they move, what are we going to do? We'll have a little better answer if we decide we want to take a more specific action. And your comment about negotiation and leverage is well-received, and I've been thinking about that as well. And not to complicate tonight's discussion, but to let you know, we have been thinking about it. That is where I think the benefit of the Urban Renewal Authority and TIF will come in. So we will negotiate a development agreement with anybody who wants to have public funds or TIF funds, and that is where we can achieve a lot of the goals that zoning, zoning is a great tool, but it is a limited tool to achieve certain affordable housing outcomes or civic presence or open space or sort of any litany of other community benefits. That will be strongly negotiated through a development agreement tied to the TIF. So that is why sort of this whole package of next steps, I think, works really elegantly, sort of a belt-and-suspender's way to get all the things that we'd hope to achieve, the historical assets, that would be in the development agreement. So that's another tool that we'll be educating people on if something like this moves forward.
Awesome. Lauren, thanks for all that.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all my council members. I get the advantage of listening to all your comments and just trying to see if I have some new questions. So I definitely agree with, the number one doesn't work for me. I feel like it's going to be vacant, that we're going to have the police out there constantly monitoring maybe vacant abandoned buildings. And then the constituents are going to be calling District Three, why, you know, what's going on? The number two doesn't work for me because I think if I was one of the residents in, you know, you're asking me, like, I sit next to that fence, and you want to raise the height, where, next to my fence? So then I might want to know, like, where does that zoning going to happen now? I think at a minimum, I don't know if the entire thing needs to be zoned right away, but if I wanted to vote yes on that one, I would want assurances that immediately adjacent, that that zoning was going to be in that low zoning, that that is fixed. And then I would be, I'd probably lean towards, you know, moving forward on the charter. I do agree that we absolutely do need to get some type of polling to see are we, instead of just a shotgun effect, that we're going in the right direction and what do we need to do? And does this, are we seeming to get some buy-in? And I do agree that I do want to be conscious, and it's, you know, I don't know which is right or not, but if we left the metal and it wasn't all the way zoned, would that give us some leverage? Maybe. Or maybe people would say that they don't want anything to happen, and they just want it all low-density. And so it's, that's where we need, we need a lot of, I know this is going to be tough for everyone, for council and staff, and it's a process, but I am definitely generally in favor of three, but at a minimum, having that zoning in place for the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dolesman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, too, am generally leaning toward number three, something that I've been a huge advocate for since being a Uh, something that I've been a huge advocate for, uh, since being on council is that we have a robust public input process. And I think the city has done a wonderful job at engaging and involving the public in these conversations. And having a rezoning, um, change be quasi judicial really ties our hands in being a part of that conversation and also prevents the public from being able to provide input for what they want to see, um, even though we are driven by the master plan that we've already adopted and the resolution in, uh, preserving the historical, uh, structures on that property. I, I, I really look forward to having the, that dialogue and have it be an open dialogue with the community, uh, for this big of an infill project. Uh, I do have a few questions, um, that, that have also kind of come from some of the comments, uh, or, or questions by other council members. One would be, how long would polling, cause I, I would probably lean towards having polling as well, um, just to kind of get a good pulse on the community, um, and then kind of see where we maybe need to pivot. But I, I don't know what that does to the timeline, particularly if we're trying to get a charter amendment, um, on this year's ballot. Uh, so I don't know if you have questions queued up for that already. Um, and then another one of my questions would kind of actually be about like the parameters and the barriers to the developer. Um, and if they tend to be in favor of this, you know, city initiated zone change or the zoning already be, being in place, or if they prefer to kind of have a clean slate. Um, and then of course, like the leverage of the conversation that we've already initiated as far as City Hall moving to, to that property, like where would that fall within kind of this initi, uh, city initiated zone change? And are we still like furthering those conversations? And do we have the ample amount of leverage as far as zoning, um, to allow for that to be a valid use?
Yeah, I'll start on the polling question.
Go for it.
Um, we could turn polling around very quickly. I don't know if you remember, we did polling for the 2J question this last November and we could have questions drafted and, and polls conducted in the same week essentially. Um, I think we could, if we start, if we get direction tonight, we could probably have something wrapped up by the end of the month even, first, first of May. So I'm not worried about that causing issues. I think that's really going to determine your next steps. Um, if you, if you get horrible results, you may want to take a step back, but, um, if the results are great, that might change, that might give you the confidence to move forward. Um, on the, um, the question about the civic uses, um, yeah, that's something, but I'll let Lauren, um, talk through those zoning pieces.
Uh, sure. So civic uses on the campus, so there's two things we could do. We would make that a permitted use obviously as a part of the zoning. And then I do think it would, it would likely fall back towards the development agreement where if a future developer would like to have the benefit of public funds and need to be cooperative in helping us potentially have a presence there. Um, we've moved the facilities master plan forward by engaging a design team and we, um, have, we plan to go tour one of the vacant office buildings of the three office buildings in the middle of the, Western one is vacant right now. Um, you know, this property will take a long time to redevelop to get new buildings. I, I would think a future developer would be eager to have a presence of a willing tenant who could create, um, who would offset the feeling of that property sitting vacant. Um, so we could, we could be there quickly. I think that'll be attractive to folks. And then in terms of how developers feel just generally about zoning, um, I would guess that most developers do not like going through a zone change process because of the same, you know, challenges that you all see play out in this room. So there, you know, there's some pros and cons, I think, from their standpoint too. I think one of the things that we'll be evaluating is what is the right zoning tool? Um, is it a plan development that could be amended by a developer in the future through private rezon? Is it creating a new zone district in the code of laws where then we have the control to update that code as we see fit? You've done that before with mixed use where we said this isn't work, we just need to change the rulebook ourselves. Um, or an overlay, which is sort of sometimes a little bit of a hybrid of the two. Uh, so far, this is a, a new idea and we did go to, um, Intermountain's broker team and they work with a lot of developers and they were very supportive and thought it would be very well received. I think what we've seen play out in the rest of our community, like when we did the legislative rezoning and said, here's the rulebook for Wadsworth or here's the rulebook for 38th, it was very well received as well. So, um, are we going to get it perfect for every developer? No, but I think we can get it close enough that it is a win-win for both the private sector and the community.
Thank you. So I do like the public-private partnership, um, that would be available with this option. Uh, I do have a couple of other questions as far as like, if we were to move forward with the city initiated zone change, can you kind of give a picture of what that re-engagement for the public would look like? Would, would we have meetings? Like kind of just outline and give a brief overview of what that would look like?
Yeah, I'm, I'm picturing, maybe this is ambitious, but I'm kind of picturing like a full court press, um, like a social media, you know, kind of rhetorical questions, right? Did you know the hospital is moving? Did you know we did a master plan? Did you know we can sort of dictate the future? Um, we, like I've already written down, our city plan meeting is next Tuesday. Can I make a board between now and then to have a booth at that meeting? Um, our goal is to have no single planning process, ours or others, go to a public meeting this year without somebody else being there. Um, so I, I think we'll, we'll try to be as visible and present in person and online as we possibly can, um, using sort of our whole menu of tools.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that too. Sorry, Lauren, to interrupt, but we, we're so many steps ahead, I think, with our public engagement tools, um, all the work we've been doing over the last several years, uh, with our What's Up Wheat Ridge, our Let's Talk, um, we have great staff that who are, um, Ashley who's focused on, on public engagement. I think, um, with this team, um, I'm not concerned. I think we could, uh, with one caveat there, that, um, you all and myself, we'd have to put a pause on any new, uh, initiatives that come out of Lauren's department, um, until we get through that and the city plan. So I think that would have to be, um, agreed upon, um, because we can't do, we can't do the city plan and this, this is going to take all of our time.
So that was actually a great precursor. We get it right. I think at this moment in time in this process with this property, we would undermine our efficiency and our public process by hiring somebody else to do it.
I agree.
So I'm committed to creating the capacity. Um, I've been talking about it with our staff. I think they're excited. Um, you know, we don't get this opportunity very often and they want to see the best outcome for that property as well. So our, our division has doubled in size over the last decade and I do think we can, we can do this.
Wonderful. And one last question and then I'll pass on the mic. Um, oh, now I just lost it. Goodness.
Okay.
Oh, actually, yeah, sorry. One, one last question. Um, have you engaged in conversations with Lutheran and Intermountain leadership and like, are they a fundamental part of this? And so we're not going to have any major obstacles to overcome?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we shared our, our memo that you all received with them and, and spoke with them. Um, their brokerage team, the brokerage team went with it, went to Intermountain leadership and, and they're all on board with this direction.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think the, the first thing that, that occurs to me is that, uh, the idea of doing nothing does not mean that the property just sits and is vacant and, um, just kind of falls apart because it's my understanding that the, uh, Intermountain has a commitment to maintain the property even after they've moved out.
Yes, from two standpoints. Um, number one, we've made very clear to them sort of what our minimum expectations are of property maintenance, whether it's occupied or not. And they have a reciprocal easement agreement with the operator of those three medical office buildings in the middle of the campus that they have to maintain, um, parking lots and roadways to support those businesses. You're right, the hospice is staying, West Pines is staying for a while. Um, there will still be people there, uh, on a day-to-day basis, just fewer.
It's not just going to fall apart and become a, an eyesore.
That's the hope. That's, we've communicated, I, I think we've communicated our expectations pretty clearly. We've had two, we've called them decommissioning meetings, um, where their team has asked us what we expect of them. We have not yet seen their decommissioning proposal in terms of maintenance and security, um, but it's been an active dialogue.
Yeah, it, it, it won't necessarily fall apart, but, um, we have some police officers in the room. I, I think they would tell you that, um, it does add a, a level of, um, additional work for them. Um, any vacant building, even if it's fenced or bordered up, it's going to, um, attract some activity you don't want. So there is, there is that potential for increased crime and, and activity that we don't want, but yeah, the campus is going to be somewhat active still, but a good chunk of it's not. It's going to be fenced up and boarded. E- even, it doesn't matter which process you go through, there's going to be a certain amount of time where-
I do believe that they, they have mentioned that their-
Yeah.
Security is one of the important things they're going to be looking at-
Yep.
Uh, going forward. The, uh, the, the other thought I had is that the proactive charter question does seem a bit like, um, putting the cart before the horse. Um, and, and a lot of the other, uh, questions I had have already been asked, but I do want, if you wouldn't mind, refresh, uh, uh, us on the options because when we look at, uh, our zoning code now, there are, uh, there are more than just R1, R2, and R3. Um, describe just real briefly about some of the mixed use and, and some of the other options you have as a zoner.
Sure. Um, we have 26 different zone districts in Wheat Ridge. About a third of those are residential and ag. Um, we have five, uh, we call them base commercial zone districts. They're old, we inherited them from Jefferson County, neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, commercial one, commercial two, industrial. I don't think any of those are a good fit, that are series of the commercial. We created mixed use zone districts in the 2010 to 12 era. Those are a good fit, but they're probably not super well-aligned with the master plan. Um, and then we have a series of plan developments, which are custom rules for a specific property. I think our community has mixed feelings about plan developments. Um, the, one of the comments raised earlier was about state legislation and how, um, the review process related to new housing may be impacted by some state legislation. In short, the two tools that we'll be evaluating is do we write a new zone district? Is it mixed use Lutheran, for example? Um, we have a lot of really good rules in our mixed use code in terms of architecture. It just doesn't reflect right now that purple-yellow balance. So we'd need a more custom residential transition rulebook. Um, but we could write a new zone, a zone district on the books. Um, and, or we could do a plan development. And there are pros and cons for both and that's what we'll be assessing as a staff with Mr. Dahl and likely with some sort of outside thought partners.
That's great. I, I look forward to seeing the results of that work.
Thanks.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, most of my questions have been answered. I just wanted to, to, um, just a few thoughts I have on, on, um, option number three, uh, to me is, is the best way for us as a city to have open dialogue, like we've said, to get out in front of a lot of, um, rumor mill type stuff, um, and really have like good conversations. Sometimes those are hard conversations, but they're conversations and people are not just, um, spinning in their minds about things. So, um, I know that will be a lot of extra work for, for all of us, for staff and for us, and I'm, um, happy to, to help out with that and, and, you know, just in whatever capacity, just to, to be open and transparent. Um, the words that, that come up to me is very, this is a very proactive approach and I feel like that is, that kind of matches, um, what we have going on right now in our city. I just feel like we have so much good momentum, um, and it's just a very proactive approach and I think it makes the most sense. Um, and then just to, um, circle back to what Mayor Protemstites was talking about with our ballot, um, the things that perhaps could go on our ballot, I also agree to postpone perhaps the clerk and treasurer discussion, um, so that we can have that charter language also on the ballot. Just wanted to throw that out there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Hulteen?
Thanks, this is just a quick comment. I, I think we all know this, but I think, you know, we're, we're recognizing the need to sort of reignite the Lutheran conversation in the community. And one of the benefits of polling is it does that. I think 2J really benefited from the two rounds of polling we did because by asking people the question, they start to raise awareness and, and orient towards the issue itself. So polling is actually, I think, a tremendous investment for us to reignite Lutheran, hopefully in a constructive way. So I just want to bring forward because, you know, polling is not free, but I think it's an investment and the objective of, of getting the Lutheran back in front of people.
Lauren, I want to thank you for a very good presentation and your, your time and diligence in answering a lot of questions from council. I think everybody had a chance to weigh in on this. I'd like to see if we have a consensus to move forward with option number three. Looks like we do.
Well, we're going to have this come, I mean, this is going to come back to us a number of times. But, well, do we, we want to get the sub, we want to get the polling going now? Yeah.
Yeah, we want to get the polling going now.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we'll take the consensus with the, not a grain of salt, but with light direction where we'll, we'll, we'll start the, the polling, um, we'll start the process.
There is a formal action required to initiate a legislative rezoning. So you'll see a resolution, um, here soon that officially tells us to start. Doesn't mean we have to finish it if the polling comes back poorly, but that will give us the direction to start.
And if I could clarify that with the polling, you just want at this point, just on, um, the height, height question. That's what I heard.
Uh, Councilor Dozeman?
Yes, and likely the, kind of just the pulse on the city initiated zoning as opposed to development initiated zoning, if that's even possible? No? Okay, and how much would polling cost roughly?
It's, um, 15, 20,000-ish.
Does that give you the information that you need?
It does.
From council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great discussion. Okay, we will go on to our, uh, second agenda item under our, um, special study session. This is a city's response to traffic issues. I know-
Thank you.
We have all, we have all of the, all of the, uh, we, answers.
We, we got them all. We got them all. The, the solar eclipse, I think aligned everything today for us.
Excellent, you know, it's very fortuitous.
And we know exactly what we should do. But, um, we have our, we have a team. Marie's going to start. So Maria DeAnaria, our Public Works Director and our Chief of Police, Murtha is here and I think Eric Kellogg, our Deputy Division Chief are all going to present on this, correct?
Yep. Good evening. Um, so the, yes, tonight will be a joint presentation, uh, with the police department, Public Works weighing in. So as you may know, the city is attempting to address traffic issues throughout the community in a variety of ways that focus not only on enforcement, which is primarily through the police, but also through education and engineering. Education can assist in advising drivers as well as bicyclists, pedestrians of their responsibilities on the road, as well as their, the rules of the road. Engineering attempts to modify the built environment, either through temporary or permanent measures to affect changes in driver behavior, usually through some sort of physical barrier or other obstacle that requires them to move out of direction. Um, the problem with engineering is that it is very cost prohibitive. So it's hard to enact these efforts in a variety of streets or as many streets that on this places where people want them, it becomes cost prohibitive. So we have taken some efforts, um, internally to start to address this, both through the engineering, um, aspects in terms of the neighborhood traffic calming program, as well as, uh, moving forward with some potential grant applications. So the recent, through the IIJA effort that was initiated at the national level, um, we've, we're working together with Dr. Cog on a, um, what's called the SS4A program or the, um, Safe Streets and Roads for All. And we're working, uh, Dr. Cog is planning to do a regional application with member agencies participating in that. So we've been talking with the staff over there and are working collectively with them to put in a grant application. Also recently, um, in the fiscal year 2022, Jefferson County received some of those funds for, through SS4A and they're actually preparing a comprehensive safety action plan for the entire county. And specifically for Wheat Ridge, they'll be doing an appendus, appendix for our city that, um, talks about very specific criteria and measures that we can put in place here. That is being completely funded through that grant and the city is not required to put in any money for that. We have met with them, uh, Jefferson County representatives several times and that's working towards, um, completion, probably towards the end of 2024. And then finally Vision Zero Strategy, uh, which was talked about in the earlier previous public comment. Again, that's a Dr. Cog initiative that's part of a larger, uh, nationwide initiative that's been, uh, moved forward by the Federal Highway Administration. Basically just as it talks about is moving towards, um, Hope where there's- Basically, just as it talks about, is moving towards, um, hope where there's no deaths or fatalities on city streets or within, um, any roadway within a, um, geographic area. So Dr. Cog has again been taking the lead on this locally, and various agencies are signing up to take, um, various measures to put together, uh, action plan towards Vision Zero. They have developed a toolkit, which we're evaluating now, and we plan to reach out to both Bike Jeffco and the AT-ATS to talk with them and bring them into the fold before we move forward with bringing that, uh, goal back to City Council for adoption. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to Chief Murtha to talk a little bit more about enforcement.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Ms. Mayor and Council. Thank you for indulging us. I know we're, we're getting a little bit late in the evening, but, um, this is an important issue for us. Uh, I always start at square one, um, when I present to communities or to our community and other folks. Um, Wheat Ridge Police Department does produce something. We produce public safety for our community. We attempt to do that in many different ways. That includes safe places to live, work, recreate, and travel. The area that receives the most community feedback for us is the safety of our streets. That's where we get most of our complaints from. We are still aware of the overwhelming, we are all aware of the overwhelming impact of our interstate highways, state roads that run through Wheat Ridge, secondary roads and cut through streets, uh, and the effect that that has on the quality of life in our community. As you all know, Wheat Ridge is a very busy city, not only for vehicles, but for pedestrians and bicyclists as well. Providing safe passage for each person using our roads is challenging for the police department. Part of our challenge is resource management. Our CAT team, or Crash and Traffic Team, currently consists of two sergeants and two officers. That's the entirety of our unit, with another officer, uh, on the way over there as we head towards full, or as we become fully staffed, um, in the current environment. Uh, however, this team handles all major vehicular collisions, uh, as well as, uh, the dedicated traffic enforcement for the city. To provide the level of traffic safety that is consistent with community feedback, we would need a substantial increase in the number of officers dedicated to traffic enforcement. That number is probably cost prohibitive. Tonight, we would like to provide you with some options that can assist in traffic enforcement and ultimately traffic safety. The benefits of automated traffic enforcement will be explained shortly by, uh, DC Kellogg. The benefits of speed compliance are many and well-known and go without saying. Corollary benefits include the safety of the officer and violator and possi, the possibility of negative outcomes from traffic stops, as well as consistent and fair penalties to the motoring public. These are strong reasons to support this technology. As the Chief of Police, it's been my experience that traffic engineering, while prohibitively expensive sometimes, has the greatest impact on driver behavior. Second is consistent and fair traffic enforcement. And lastly is education. I don't mean to diminish education, it just never seems to have the impact that we wish it would. Automated speed enforcement presents a fair, reliable, consistent, and cost-effective way of mitigating our problem. This is not the panacea for traffic control, but a great cornerstone of traffic control. There are many different complaints about traffic. Um, not all of them have to do with speed or red light violations, but this is a way to take some of that off the plate. From the police department perspective, we are seeking direction from council tonight, or seeking approval from council tonight regarding our recommendation to move forward with automated speed enforcement and the possibility, the possible use of automated red light enforcement. We understand that these programs could sometimes be hard for the public to accept. We were looking at this technology to remove some of the burden of personalized enforcement, i.e. using a police officer for every traffic infraction in areas with a high number of traffic violators, so that then our officers can focus more on the neighborhood complaints. Getting off of the main roads, getting into the neighborhoods. Or- Usually-
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chief. My, my dog takes daily meds at certain times, and that's the only way I remember, sorry.
It's okay. Usually my wife just throws a shoe when I'm done, so if I can see a shoe, I'll know. Our philosophy, uh, is to problem solve in the police department. Uh, and be able to tell the community, uh, not what we cannot do, but what can be done. Uh, we feel the frustration of the community. Uh, we know this technology, uh, is a reliable option. Um, and we think the ability to demonstrate our collect, and I think this demonstrates our ability, um, our collective commitment to traffic safety. Recent changes in legislation have made automated speed enforcement more viable, and more communities are looking at it. Uh, with that, I'm gonna turn over the quick presentation to DC Kellogg, who'll explain the proposed programs, and, uh, we will certainly leave time for, uh, what I expect will be several questions about this program.
Well, I don't know that there's a lot that I can add to start this, uh, conversation. Uh, I think the chief identifies our primary product is, uh, public safety. And what I'll offer is that, um, uh, in, in, in looking to find enough resources to do what we have to do to offer this community the level of public safety that it deserves, we have in the past looked at, um, uh, looked at technology. As a matter of fact, in Jul, in January, this, uh, this group, uh, approved the, um, Tyler Industries Brazos e-ticketing system, which on Wednesday, we, uh, we are in our, our, our mid-meeting, so they built the foundation. We're getting ready to individualize, uh, that, uh, that piece of technology. That piece of technology, having used that piece of technology for the last eight years, will reduce the time it takes for an officer to stop a vehicle, write a ticket, and then move on to the next task at hand. Uh, my experience with that was, uh, it reduced, um, a 15-minute traffic stop to somewhere in the vicinity of two to three minutes. And so, uh, we've used technology in the past. Uh, in addition, we use, uh, a, a different type of, or another type of, um, technology, and that is the, um, the, uh, the product called the Jammer Black Cat product. And what we use for this, uh, with this product is, uh, I'm sorry, what we get with this product is a, a printout much like this that basically tells us, um, where we, we set this product up, and then we, it tells us whether this is an appropriate place to utilize our, our sworn resources or not. Uh, and so, um, we have the opportunity to move this around to different places and figure out where, uh, we then appropriately deploy our, our sworn resources. In the last six months, we've, we've had, uh, or we've conducted 21 speed studies. I'm not gonna read through all of these, but, uh, we've, we've tried to identify, um, uh, places that have been asked to be evaluated by our citizens, but also from our, uh, experience, uh, where we could potentially have some, some challenges traffic-wise, from a, from a public safety perspective. Um, I will offer that, uh, the following data, uh, and I believe that was included in your memo as well, um, includes 20 of the 21 speed studies that were completed. Twelve of those speed studies, we, we placed the, uh, the Jammer, the Black Cat, we talk, call it the black box, on one of our highly, our most highly-trafficked avenues, 29th Street, 32nd, uh, 38th and 44th. The studies were conducted for between seven and 14 days, and the posted speed limits ranged between 25 miles per hour and 35 miles per hour, with the threshold for violation set at about 10, at, set at 10 miles per hour over. Uh, we measured forty, 440,084 cars, and we found that the average speed in these, uh, in these 20 locations, uh, was 29.1 miles, uh, an hour. Uh, the total enforced, uh, enforceable violations of that number was 14,091 vehicles. We could have written, um, had enforceable violations. That means 32% of those vehicles measured were in violation. I want to mention, um, so this is one of the great reasons why we identify and use the black, this black box. One of the measures-
Eric, just to clear that up, 3.2%, not 32%.
What did I say?
Thirty-two.
Oh, you can, sorry. 3.2%, yes.
3.2%.
I actually have gone through this a couple of times, I should have been on that. My apologies, my apologies. Um, one of the traffic, I'm sorry, one of the traffic studies, uh, was identified as an outlier. And so, uh, that is the frontage road and, frontage road in Parfet, uh, Parfett Street. Uh, and so we measured 5,640 vehicles, uh, in that location. Uh, we ran that for a seven-day period. Uh, 1,646 were enforceable violations, or 29% of the vehicles measured were in violation. And so you can be sure, uh, when, when my, uh, traffic sergeant got wind of this, uh, he and his, uh, his, uh, officers have spent quite a bit of time there in the last week since we learned of this. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, they spent about an hour and a half there today and, uh, found several violations, so. Um, of note, uh, and the chief's already kind of identified this, but the, the data, uh, was used for guiding our sworn officers into the various places where we find, where we found high, uh, volumes of violations, and they, in fact, wrote 1,530 citations. Our crash and traffic team, um, as the, uh, uh, chief already identified, is currently staffed with one traffic sergeant and, and two, uh, officers. It's set for one traffic sergeant and four, uh, officers. We're gonna add another officer at the end of April, and then, um, my intention, if I have my way, is to have them fully staffed by the end of the year, uh, as we move closer to being fully staffed and, and, and really a, a very effective, uh, recruiting and training process that we have in place right now. There is a, a third option for saving, uh, saving, uh, saving the time, uh, providing the officers the time they need to get to other places. Uh, and that is the automated traffic enforcement. And that's been measured, uh, mentioned a couple of times here this evening, but it offers a couple of different things, and, and I think quite a bit more than what they identify here. They, it offers enhanced community safety and security, improved traffic-related safety co, uh, conditions for your citizens, uh, continuous monitoring. So when you place the object, it stays, and it monitors every, uh, every vehicle going through that location. And it doesn't, it doesn't stop, it doesn't need to go have a meal, it doesn't need to, uh, uh, go use the restroom. Uh, and the other thing is, now, you, you won't have this, my experience here in, in our, in Wheat Ridge is you won't have this experience, uh, but it removes any possibility of biased, uh, police enforcement through AI-powered technology. Now, our officers are exceptional, I'll, I'll tell you that. Having been at, uh, at two other locations, our officers are the top 1% in this country I'll offer. Um, and so you won't have this off, this, this problem with, with these officers. However, it does substantially remove the possibility of it. Uh, it has impact, um, it has a great deal of impact. Um, and, and this is just, I'm gonna show you three, but this is just, uh, three of several that I was able to find. So, uh, this was a Georgia school zone, and in a years-long, in a year-long time of using this, uh, the object, uh, the, the, the speed measurement, uh, device, it reduced, it decreased the speeding issue by 42%. Same, uh, same type of scenario, but over a six-month period in Suffolk, uh, Virginia, 56% decrease in speeding. And then in Harrisburg, Virginia, over a five-month period, 71% decrease in speeding. Um, and so I think was mentioned earlier in the conversation, and research stands true, um, speeding is one of the great causes of, of injury. Um, the faster you're going, the, the higher and more, um, more impactful the, the accidents can be. Um, it's, it's, there, there are five things that you can do with these products. Um, the two that I would initially want to start with, and potentially three, again, depending on, on the council's appetite for how we utilize these, but, uh, would be the speed enforcement and the reckless speed warnings. Identifying the, uh, the enforcement nature of what we need to do in order to, uh, provide that public safety product, but also the educational aspect of it. When we, when we have people that are driving, uh, inappropriately, um, the system also allows for warnings. And then if, if, uh, again, if the council feels it's, it's an appropriate thing, we have red light enforcement, and there's a number of different things we can do as it relates to school sto, uh, school bus stops and, and school safety items as well. The automated ve, the automated vehicle recognition is something that helps in investigations. Um, but that can also help to address some of the eludings that we have had here recently that, of course, cause a great deal of issue for our public safety as well. Um, the automated traffic enforcement basically uses current AI technology. It's, it's, it's a fixed, or it's a mobile option that, that we can, we can choose to utilize. And I did want to say, uh, with regards to the fixed option, it, 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 it's connected, it's attached to a variety of different things. It's attached to a pole or whatever we can identify. However, it's, it's not that we can't move it, it just takes a little bit, uh, more lead time to move it. Um, it reduces the required sworn manpower to monitor our traffic problems. One of the things that SB 23200 allowed for was for non-sworn individuals to move these types of, uh, these types of pieces of equipment around. And so, um, the company, or one of the companies that we've chatted with, uh, they will provide the maintenance, they will do all of the maintenance, keep it appropriately, uh, tuned, uh, and, and so we don't have any issues with it being out of, uh, calibration. Um, and then with a little lead time, uh, we, we, we call our representative, and he or she will move either the fixed object or the mobile option, uh, as well, to wherever we want them to, to bring it to. And it's, it's cost-neutral, it's, it's violator-funded. Uh, how it works, uh, the AI product catches a violator. He finds, uh, it finds a violation, and then it sends, uh, violation information to the company by their secured website, who confirms the violation based on the parameters that, that we, the city and, and the police department set. Uh, the company then sends the violation to Wheat Ridge, um, to their software access point, and, uh, we have an employee review that and decide if it's an enforceable violation or it's gonna be a warning to the violator. We have that discretion, we don't give that discretion up. What I do wanna, I wanna offer right here is SB 23200, uh, identifies a couple of things. Um, one, it identifies the fact that, um, for the first 30 days of, of this product being in place, we are required to actually send warnings to anybody they find in violation. Um, the second is we can, again, set the parameters, uh, but we, uh, we can identify what parameters we set, but in the, for a person's first violation, if they're within 10 miles an hour or whatever parameter we set of the speed limit, uh, they can also get a warning as well. So there's a couple of different ways that, um, um, that we remute, we remove the, uh, the AI technology and keep our humanness into this conversation. And that is, we don't give up our discretion, we can set the parameters to, to meet our community expectations and standards, and that we can also, um, and then, and then SB 2, uh, 23200 also helps us to identify those parameters as well. The next thing is the Wheat Ridge employee sends that approved violation or that warning back to the company, who then sends a civil ticket, depending on what we've decided, sends a civil ticket for violation or the warning back to the violator to be bade through the company's website, or over the phone, or through the US Postal Service. If the violator pays the violation, the company retains their fees for service, uh, provided, uh, for services provided, and sends the remainder to the city on a schedule, uh, selected by the city. If the violator wants to oppose the violation, it reverts to our normal, uh, our, our normal court process, and the company will send a case file to our prosecutor for, uh, uh, with the needed, uh, information for and to effectively prosecute the violation.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Counselor Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when you're talking about the, um, automatic, um, recognition piece of that, is that something that, like, so it recognizes the vehicle, but then, like, does it identify, like, expired tags, or if it's stolen, or things like that?
It, it can, we can set the parameters to address, to address those things. One of the things I would, I would want to offer is, um, SB 23200, uh, does not require for anybody to identify who the driver is. It tickets the registered owner, and you can't, and it can only require the registered owner to prove that he or she was not the driver. It cannot- It cannot require the registered owner to say who the driver was.
Do we have any other tools that help us with recognition of stolen vehicles currently that we're utilizing?
Uh, we, we do.
Like, I'm, sorry, automated tools?
Oh, okay. Well, not, not automated, but we do have, we do have the technology attached to some of our vehicles to, to catch and, and run it right through CCIC, all of the plates that it catches.
We do, we do have license plate readers that we received on a grant up and around the I-70 corridor, I-70 and Kipling up there. I think we have a total of six, we have a camera that's also on, that we, that we share with Edgewater on Sheridan, on Sheridan Boulevard over there as well. So yes, and those are directly tied, when it gets a hit, it ties into our computer system, officers are trained in that computer system, and it will alert them expeditiously that the vehicle just crossed that path and go to that area. We've had success because we kind of know where they're going in I-70 and Kipling, and we, we tend to end up at some of our notorious locations to find those vehicles. Yes.
Okay. Well, this really seems very much like a work smarter, not harder.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I, and I, I am in support of the speed enforcement, the reckless speed warnings and the red light enforcement. Where I, where I start to get a little, hmm, not sure, is the automated recognition, not, not because it could help us catch stolen vehicles, I think that that's good, and there's some, you know, some definite, or, you know, I'm, I'm imagining amber alerts, you know, things like that. It's, it's kind of that whole expired tag conversation around how, you know, oftentimes those are folks who can't afford that, and, and so, you know, if we had more conversation around the automated recognition, then, then I feel like I could probably support that. But I'm definitely in support of the, of the other three. I appreciate you guys bringing these options to us. Not only is it work smarter, not harder, but also, there's also like, you know, there, there are deaths of officers on the sides of roads when people are not paying attention and they're, you know, giving a, a speeding citation, and so it's a safety issue for me too. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Yep. If I could make one quick comment on that, there's, there's three modules that they offer, one is a fixed, for automated speed enforcement, one is a fixed post type, which they would encourage along some of our major corridors that are violator, that we have a large number of violators, that would remove officers and resources from having to be on that. There's a mobile one, which is much more nimble, we can move that to the places where we're allowed to put it, residential streets are now included, but school zones and work zones, so we could move it between schools with little notice. There's also a handheld device, which does exactly the same thing, but an officer would use that to point at vehicles. So we're responsible, if you didn't know, for half of, well, for most of I-70 in the Wheat Ridge boundary, we don't do much enforcement up there because of the, what you pointed out. It is hyper-dangerous to put an officer out there and ask him to write a ticket, yet we hear a lot of complaints about the speeding and the noise on there. If we were to choose to get that device, we could have an officer sit by, it's not a, it's not an interaction, it's just simply pointing basically what looks like a radar gun that's tied to a computer that does the same exact thing, uses AI to read the license plate and issues citations to folks if we wanted to in those construction zones or on a normal day up on I-70 without putting officers at risk. So it's a huge safety benefit if we, if we went down that route.
Absolutely, and, and I'm in support of all three of those.
We did not, just so you know, we did not discuss with any of the companies using this for sort of an expired registration. We don't necessarily see that as the most safety violation, the safety violation that we're talking about, we're talking about speeders and reckless drivers and red light runners. That's where the safety is, and that's what this is focused on, nothing else other than that. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you for that presentation. I am very in support of, of all of these things, and I just want to offer that you are welcome to put a pole outside the farm on 38th, or, or give me one of those things, I'll sit out in my, my yard, and I just, you know, I just want to warn Counselor Stites that, you know, just about that.
There's pretty good demand, we're going to have to bid that up.
Pardon?
We're going to have to bid that up where they go. Counsel, Counselor Oom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. A couple, I mean, first a comment, I know when I fly back to see my parents in Montana, they, this is a long time ago, but they would have an old cop car with, you know, the dummy sitting in the seat, and the intent was for people to slow down, they see the cop car and they slow down, but eventually people had figured out like, yeah, there's no cop there, there's no teeth, and, you know, because you're not getting a, you're not getting a, a traffic fine. And so I think that, you know, having the automated ones as small as possible, I don't know, it sounds like these might be on a trailer?
Yeah, there, there are different options, we have, as, as the chief noted, there's a handheld, very tiny, and then the other, the trailer is four by six, I think, because it has to power itself.
Yeah. I think that would be a, a great idea, I know that I have a lot of constituents around my neighborhood that, you know, we already have some of the speed humps, and they're, and we're still getting complaints that there's the occasional speeder, and I've seen a lot on, on 38th, I don't know if that's a possibility of putting them along 38th, but very much in support of this, and, you know, freeing up, you know, police officers' time, having this be automated, and then also, you know, just really to try to catch those, the people that are really speeding, that, that is a priority. It doesn't happen that often, but just to kind of send a message, and I think it's good that instead of being stationary where you, because pretty soon you start expecting like, yeah, I know it's on this street and I'm going to take the next street over, that it's mobile, that you can move it around, and that you just need to slow down everywhere. The one question I did have was the, it's called the speed limit tolerance, and that was something one of the constituents asked tonight. I was just doing a quick check, it said that some of them will set them to like 10% of the speed plus two miles an hour. I've heard, I think around 11 miles per hour, I don't know if that's a state law over the speed limit, but that would mean that, you know, we have like roughly 25 in the neighborhood, so you're looking at a lot, that's pretty high speed before somebody gets a ticket.
Yeah, we can, we can work with the company to set the parameters. Now, we're governed by SB 23-200 in some of those parameters, but for the most part, we can set those parameters pretty much what we want them to be.
Yeah, I'm in favor of a great thing that was being proposed to, like my fellow council members, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to restrict my comments to the automated enforcement now, and then I want to make sure we're addressing like the overall speed and safety issues. So actually, I've got some breaking news on this. Tomorrow, the Colorado State Legislature is actually introducing a cleanup bill. I actually was one of the authors of the bill you're referencing, and I am one of the, I've heavily influenced, there's my language in this bill that's coming out tomorrow, so I just want to share with you, I just got the cleanup bill draft today, and I will share it with you guys afterwards, but a couple of things that are just good to know, and this was at the request of CDOT to do this cleanup, they are, so any enforcement on state roads needs to be coordinated with CDOT, and that revenue goes to, to the state. And that revenue actually will go into a vulnerable road user thing, that's the thing I've been working on. So automated enforcement throughout the state of Colorado that is on state roads will actually go towards a dedicated fund to reinvest in vulnerable road user safety. And then the bill that you're referencing allows local jurisdictions, if we pass a resolution authorizing ourselves to do the automated enforcement on our local roads, and so that is still our, our jurisdiction that we, we would have to do. If we go this direction, I would propose that we do the, the same thing as CDOT's proposing, in that we would take the revenue that comes from it and put it towards vulnerable road user safety reinvestments in our own community, because they are the most at risk from the dangerous driving behaviors. And on our local roads where we would be collecting that revenue is really where, like, I, I just, if we're collecting the revenue, I want it to be reinvesting back into the problem that we're hearing really loudly from our community, which is that they're perceiving local neighborhood streets are not safe for them to walk and ride their bikes. So I would like for us to consider if we move forward with that, to make sure we're using the revenue to reinvest in improving safety. And then just one thing on speeds, so we were talking about the plus 10 miles an hour on a 25 mile an hour road, that's a 40% increase in the speed, so if you're going 10 miles an hour, it's 40% over the speed limit. 40% over the speed limit on a 35 mile per hour road, which is 38th Avenue, goes by the farm and over by Cory, that would be almost 50 miles an hour, it's 49. So when we're really looking at like these hard cutoffs, I think looking at the relative percentage is really important. And as a reminder, when you're traveling at those speeds, at 25 miles an hour, the likelihood of surviving being hit by a car, and this is using calculations from 12 years ago when cars were actually smaller, at 25 miles an hour, you are pretty much guaranteed to survive that crash. At 35 miles an hour, you're getting close to like 40% likelihood of not surviving, and if you go over 40 miles an hour, it, it goes to 70, 70% likelihood you are not going to survive that crash if you're outside of the car. So those miles really count a lot for safety outside of vehicles. And the roads that we're on, and why speed really matters, you know, we, my neighborhood was built in the 1950s, and one thing again, trucks and cars are getting so big, I was walking my dog around the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago as I was working on the bill that's getting introduced, and I noticed all of these just gigantic trucks, and like, my neighbors, I'm like, why, why am I seeing all these trucks in people's driveways? And I realized the trucks are too big to fit in the garages that were built in 1950, that's how much bigger the vehicles are that people are driving through our neighborhoods. And in my neighborhood in 1950 when it was built, Colorado average, it was the first year there was more than one average car per household. This year in Colorado, or last year technically, it's 2.2 cars per household. So not only do we have this bigification, but we have more and more people who are actually in cars driving around, it used to be there wasn't as much driving to go where you want to go. So we just, you know, the perception in our neighborhoods is that there's more cars, they're bigger, and so every mile counts under those circumstances. So everything we can do, I think automated enforcement's a really great, great way to get some of that habitual speeders on corridors, and I think we can break a lot of habits that way, so I think this is really great. I'm happy to work with you guys on making sure we dial this in, but I, I just hope we follow the state's lead and use the, the revenue that we collect locally to reinvest in safety in our corridors.
Just, just a quick comment on that, this is not in any way, was never an outreach to, to try and create a funding stream for the police department, I know people will say that, but no, this is about public safety, so less concerned about where the revenues go, hopefully they will go to the right place, more concerned about public safety, if the state roads want to take revenue, that's great, as long as our officers can conduct traffic safety on the highway in a manner that's, you know, preserves their lives, I think that's really what the bottom line is. As far as the 10 mile an hour on the black boxes, that was just a number we set because we, we have different officers putting them out there, and not all of them are trained to program the, the boxes. When our officers enforce speed individually, those speeds are, are different for the different speeds on the road, so they are lower for low-speed roads and higher, and there might be a higher tolerance for a higher-speed road. I don't want people to think that's what Wheat Ridge does across the board, we don't. We could enforce one mile an hour over, but I think that would really create a lot more conflict than good, so there is that tolerance in there, but there is no national matrix for how that's enforced. It's done individually by each community, and we like to be, try and be respectful of the community standard and the values of this community. So we hear the input tonight and understand what people are interested in.
Okay, thanks for that. And, and I know we're not talking about like generating revenue through this program, but to me, the revenue matters because the reason we're having to do automated enforcement is because we have streets that are designed for speed and ease of cars to travel quickly. And so the reason that they're speeding a lot of times is not because they're bad people, it's because we have street design that like is really encouraging that or allowing it. So that's why how we use the revenue in this instance matters, is that like if the problem is people are speeding, it's because the road design isn't for the right speed. And so we just want to make sure that we're putting the revenue back into actually solving the core problem instead of just allowing people to keep speeding and collecting revenue, so that's why that matters.
I didn't mean to say I wasn't in favor of using revenue in a, in a positive way for, to affect speed on the streets, it just was never a driving force here. It could, the companies that we've talked to say you, you can expect a 90% decline in revenue in the first year, because these things are effective in reducing speed, and as you said, some people will get used to them, that's why we want to have mobile devices mixed in here, so that, you know, it's kind of like, you know, the unpredictability of certain people, you just don't know what's going to happen, so you avoid them. You avoid speeding because you don't know where the speed camera might be, and that's, you know, that's kind of our hope to keep people nimble. We know a lot of these folks that we, we run into are not residents, that they're not reflective of the community, they are cutting through Wheat Ridge, they're late for work, and they're using our streets to, as, you know, as, as an interstate system to get around. So it, it, it certainly is something that we are cognizant of, that the people who are speeding are not looking out for this, this community.
I'd love for us to have no revenue, that would be a great problem to have.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I think the only comment I have on the automated enforcement issue is that this is fairly common, these are not something that would be unique to Wheat Ridge, especially if you travel in other states. The, the question I have though is, and this may be for, for our attorney, when you receive a notice of the ticket in the mail through, delivered through the mail, is that considered a legal service?
Yes, and that was one of the changes that 23, that 23-200 allowed for, it was one of the, it, it, it added two other options, actually four, if you, if you look at it from the perspective of you can use the mail or something equally as speedy, and, and so there, it, it opened up a lot of different options for delivery.
So if, if the, the person simply ignores the mail and says, I never got it, wouldn't that be a defense? Because the mail is not, you know, it's not certified, it's not like guaranteed to arrive.
Right. This is, so this would be a, this would be a civil matter, the company that we would work with would actually, they have a process for that, ultimately, it would go through a collections company to address it.
Okay, and then, go, excuse me, going back to the discussion about the monthly traffic issues coordination, and that's, it sounds like something that, probably a bit overdue, but I think it's a very, very timely effort. Tell me a little bit about the shared electronic filing system, do we not already have something like that?
We do not, so PD has been collecting their own data, engineering has, and Public Works have been collecting their own, so we're trying to create that so that we don't double up, and that we instead, you know, use our limited resources in an efficient way.
So it'd be what, a single database for, for traffic counts and that kind of thing?
Yeah, so whether it's the black boxes that they're currently using, we have the tube counters that we use that we put out in the street, so putting all that data, and then having that for history reasons too, so to see over a period of time if those volumes and or speeds are changing at all.
That's a great idea. And then the other question I have is the request form for how to track that better if somebody wants to put a sign on, you know, on their street. I've always had the impression that Wheat Ridge was not really in favor of a lot of traffic signs, a lot of slow-down, speed-up, traffic speed limit signs here and there. Does this mean that, that we'll be seeing more traffic signs on, on our streets?
So there is part of 23-200, if you want to, so you can utilize these in a variety of different places, emergence, that the automated systems can use them on, in school zones and construction zones and maintenance zones and, and the like. If we wanted to ident, and you can use it along a road, way along a park. If we wanted to identify a road that we wanted to place one on permanently, we would have to identify it as a corridor and then identify and then place signs on either end of it, this corridor, that would identify that it is a, that it is, that there is automated speed taking, speed measurements being taken at this moment. So from that perspective, yes, you may see some additional signs, but for the most part,
But for the most part, I think we're going to be able to, I think, I don't think, I don't necessarily think that we would need to utilize that corridor requirement.
Right. Thank you. And, and so I understand this correctly, then there's a, there's a group being formed that will look at, or at least coordinate the requests that come in for, I want a traffic circle, I want a new speed limit sign, or I want a whatever kind of a sign that we're not doing now.
Again, I, I think it's, it's somewhat scattered. So PD gets requests, Public Works gets requests. And the form is just more of an internal to document, you know, what our response is going to be, who's going to respond. And then if we do decide to install a sign or perhaps do some striping or something, or make a modification in the field, then we're documenting that for long-term purposes. But yes, those traffic issues meetings monthly are intended to bring all of us together and really identify what's the right approach. So people often ask for a stop sign because they want people to go slower. Stop signs are not the measure or the method by which we want to stop drivers or slow them down. That's meant for right of way, who has the right of way at a particular intersection. So we really want to then educate people on what's the right use. And people will often say, I want a stop sign when really they want traffic calming or they want speed, people to go slower. So our response might be is to start with the black box or to do a speed count out there to evaluate what is the right or what are the speeds before we can even evaluate whether there's an issue or not. And then take steps from there.
Right, and, and so then somebody asks for a, a stop sign or something, there would be a, a process for replying to that request?
Correct, yeah.
That's great. It's always, it's always got to be part of it. Somebody asks you for something, you give them an answer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. This is, I'm really excited that we're talking about this. Probably the number one discussion topic of late for me with constituents has been traffic and speeding, intersections, things like that. So I have, I've created a, just for my own records, a document of where everyone is, what the issues they're having, that kind of thing. So I, I wanted to share, you know, more of that. But one question I have about this, the automated traffic enforcement system, the process is once someone has issued a citation or once there's, you know, someone's speeding and they, and it goes through, it then comes to Wheat Ridge to, I guess, verify that. And then from there, you send it back to the company and they go ahead and issue the citation, correct?
Right, they, they will, their, their equipment will send to them a notation on who it was that violated. They note those violators on a website that we go to, a secured website that we go to. And then we yay or nay based on our discretion and, and some of the governing principles that we have to abide by.
Sure.
Just, just to be clear on that, so AI will read the tag.
Right.
It will pass that over to a human who will then examine that closer. And then there will be a third quality control check to make sure that a separate person also agrees that that is the right tag. If there's dispute, it just gets thrown out. But if we can agree on the tag, then it gets sent to the Wheat Ridge officer, who then has to agree and then determine what path we take with that. If we say, oh, there, you know, we, we know we, let's say we knew that there was some issue on that road that, that day or that week, we would, we would make a note and we would probably throw those tickets out or maybe issue a warning if it resulted in somebody having to, you know, speed if a fire truck was behind him or something like that.
Gotcha. So on that, just thinking about resources and all that you're tasked with doing and the many directions that you're pulled in, do you feel like those responses are, that's going to be something that you're able to handle when that comes to pass?
I think that we would use our, probably our CAT team and we'd, we'd probably add a person. We might ask, Councilor Hulteena is spending some of that money. We might ask to just, just recoup the costs for that person to review it through the program. Smaller cost obviously, but enough to, because in most of these contracts, they will say, this is how much it costs for our equipment every month. And up until we get the equipment paid for, that's all our money. And then after that, it's the processing and then you get a certain percentage of it. But having an officer, having to sit down and go through what potentially could be thousands of tickets is going to be a lot of time. And then that officer has to be trained and they have to be able to testify in court because they're the ones that will go in and suggest that I understand how this machine is calibrated, how it works, and then, you know, I, I can successfully testify if I need to. So, and just to be clear also, these citations go out multiple times before anything happens to any of the violators. And then at that point, then at that point, there's other actions that are taken after that. But it's not like one shot in the mail and we hope it got there. I think at the third time, they sent a registered letter to their house. I think it's two mailings, is that right Eric? There's two mailings and then a third is a registered letter.
Right.
So we, we're not just depending on the goodwill of the post office to get it there. We're, we're, we're taking multiple shots there.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I've got lots more to say about it, but I wanted to clarify that and make sure that that was something that, I know you factored in, but just making sure. All of the residents that I have spoken with are, just like we've all said, volunteering. If you need to put anything in their yard, on their street, then they're very much in favor of that. So I appreciate all the work on this. Thank you.
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I seem to be in the minority in being generally opposed to automated traffic enforcement. So I have several questions. Bear with me. First, kind of about that due process. And so they get two in the mail and then a registered letter. At what point can they, you know, show up to court and, and contest the ticket? Aside from, you know, if it's not the registered driver and they can, you know, send in a photo saying that, that wasn't me and, and then get it dropped?
At any, at any point, whenever, whenever they receive notification, they can contest it and request a court date. We would have to obviously change some of the ordinance here so that we can accommodate automated speed enforcement as a civil penalty to be adjudicated through our court system. But they can, they can request that at any point in time and say, I, I dispute this violation for whatever reason. They might say that the, we don't believe the equipment was right or, you know, I wasn't driving or potentially the, the vehicle was stolen, somebody else had it. And then we would, we would look at all those circumstances. If somebody said, my car was stolen, why am I responsible? We would obviously take action, throw those citations out. You know, immediately upon verifying that the car was stolen. But those are some of the reasons that somebody might do that. But yes, they can always contest it, come to court and dispute the citation. Just like anything we would write, we would write into the book as a human, as a sworn officer writing a citation, they have all the same rights there.
And it was mentioned at the District Four meeting that the Wheat Ridge Police Department is going to potentially be fully staffed, like completely fully staffed by the end of this year with some of the graduation classes in the police academy. And that's pretty unique to police departments, correct?
Yes, we will be, right now we have seven that are graduating this within the next month. That will put us just a few below staffing. And the five that we have in the academy will, when they graduate in June, May or June, they will come out and start field training. And that will make us fully staffed with those folks. So by the end of the year, they'll all be fully competent to go on their own and we should be fully staffed, so yes.
So to me, this kind of seems, or the automated traffic enforcement kind of sees, seems counterintuitive to the relationship-based policing that we really, you know, held from our police department because it kind of takes away that human touch in my mind. Can you maybe speak to how you see this aligning with that?
Yeah, I don't think they're, they're at odds. I think our job again is public safety from the get-go. Relationship-based policing is the way we ask our officers to interact with our community. We ask them to create a relationship, to create a better relationship. This, this may, this may cut down on the number of, of interactions we have on certain corridors with folks. But what I'm suggesting is that then we move into the community that we haven't been able to get to when we're fully staffed and work on the community issues on this, maybe more of the secondary streets or the side roads. And we have that relationship-based policing opportunity there. So while we, while we have a massive speeding problem, there's no amount of relationship-based policing that's going to solve that. We know that we have to go outside of our comfort zone with relationship-based policing to do that. But we still have plenty of other opportunities to, to converse with drivers and educate them on speeding.
So I, I agree with some of the perception as far as, you know, opposition to the ATE in that it's a revenue generating, some people will call it scheme. And so can you maybe talk a little bit more about like the financial structure, particularly with the contracting group? Like, do they get a percentage of the tickets that are written or like? And can you talk more about the costs as far as the equipment goes as well?
Sure, Eric, you want to talk about that? Sure. So again, I, I go back to the Senate bill. It identifies a very specific amount of money that can be charged for each violation. $40 for the civil infraction, for the speeding civil infraction, and then 75 for a, for a red light violation. When it goes through their services, they take 30%. So essentially when they, when we write a speeding ticket, they'll get $12 and $28 will eventually come to us. They are, are you, you know, let me pull up the numbers, make sure I give it to you correctly.
Well, he's looking for that. I'm going to say, I think they quoted, one of the companies quoted us about $2,000 a month to rent, to rent a trailer or the, any of their products. So they would collect the first $2,000. Now, obviously they're, they're a, you know, they're a for-profit company. So it's in their best interest to have these studies, which we did and allowed them to look at. And in their mind, we have a, we are, you know, for lack of a better word, we're, we're certainly going to meet their, their ability to make their $2,000 a month and then some because we have so much speeding as compared to other communities that they've looked at. We have so much driving behaviors here. So there is a cost to it. I have, I do come from the East Coast. It was alluded to that that's, we're very happy with, you know, putting speed cameras everywhere on the East Coast. So I can tell you that I've been through this before and that the communities will initially have pushback, but eventually they will, they, they understand what the, the purpose of it is. Most people have gotten used to it by now.
And so are there like guarantees in place in which, like, I, I would just be nervous that like some sort of financial incentive structure with the contracted company that is a for-profit organization. You know, that there could just be some technological errors and things of that nature.
So let me make sure I understand your question. Are you asking if they don't make the money that they expected?
Right, yeah. Or, yeah, I mean, that's one scenario, of course. Or like if there are technological errors, how, how often are the, is the equipment looked at and calibrated?
Right, so my apologies, I didn't understand the question initially. So if it's, if the camera isn't generating the revenue necessary, then they're going to identify the fact that is there another place that would benefit from this camera currently? Addressing the, the speed and the, the speed violators and so on and so forth. So they'll move based on, they, they will recommend to move. Now we can say, you know what, no, we're going to leave it right there. And, and that's how this is going to be. With regards to the maintenance, they will come out monthly and actually calibrate it and make sure that it is exactly the way it's supposed to be for the purposes of accurate speed measurement and, and, and red light violation measurements.
And the, the camera itself actually self-calibrates. We used to have to calibrate differently when we started. We used to use a tuning fork for a radar. Now these computers can self-calibrate themselves and they have a check system internally. We'll be trained on that and be able to explain it a little better. I can ask the, the folks who do this for a living. But the way it was explained to us is these things are calibrated. It sends a report to the company. We check this, we check this, it's calibrated. They'll have that certificate, they'll, they can provide that to us at any time. And then they come out and physically inspect the equipment once a month as well.
So this technology has been revived, I think, in recent years. But they had really gone away from it. And I don't know if, if Dahl can maybe speak to this a little bit better. Was it challenged in court? Is that why they started to kind of remove some of them in Colorado specifically? Or can you talk about those trends?
I, I don't think so. I don't think it's because of a challenge to enforceability. I think it's more just sort of, you know, a political, social policy choice of, of the local governments that have been engaging in it. I don't think it's a matter of, gosh, we can't do it now because it's not enforceable. I, I haven't seen that as a trend.
Another part of that, if I can add, was the business model. The business model didn't work out so that the companies weren't making money. So if they start charging the city, the city would say, just pull your equipment out. We, we get it, like people know where our cameras are. That's why having mobile cameras is an effective tool. But that was part of it as well, as I understood it. A lot of cities entered into contracts that just weren't favorable. We're talking about a contract that explicitly states that the city of Wheat Ridge would never pay a dime, even if we don't make $2,000 a month to pay for their equipment. We would never be responsible for that at the end of the contract. And we could pull that contract with, you know, notice like any other contract. So in other words, if a camera's set up and we had maintenance on that road and we couldn't use it, nobody was using it, nobody was speeding, and we didn't make $2,000 that month, they would roll it to the next month and say, you owe us $4,000. And if it cut to the end of the contract and we still owed $4,000, there's a, there's a clause in there that we would never owe money. They're not interested in making that business reputation to the point where it just sounds like money-making is what I understand. And that's written into their contracts.
Okay, the last thing I had was like if you would be giving some like data points and updates on, on like whether this is cost-effective?
Sure, I mean, we'd be, we intend to monitor this very closely. We understand that, you know, we're asking council to carry the water. So you would be asked about this program where folks are going to, you know, invariably get citations in the mail. What is this all about? Even Wheat Ridge residents. And so we would monitor the effectiveness and, and just determine at some point whether this was, you know, after we let it sit in place for a while, whether this is still the route we want to go. So we're not tied or tethered to this forever. But if we see reduction, if we see speed reduction, collision reduction, all those things, then yes. You know, I'd come back and say, I recommend we continue on this path because, or I recommend we don't because of this.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, you had mentioned, I believe it's, when it goes into a new area, it's a 30-day, they get a warning before they start getting citations, is that correct? Okay. I would say, I'll just make this really brief. As a citizen, I absolutely hate these. And 10 years ago, I probably would have been adamantly against this just because, well, I mean, it's general immaturity, I guess. But now that I have kids and now that, as Councilor Hulteena said, cars are much bigger, much faster, just in neutral or just in drive, they go very quickly. So it's definitely something we need to monitor. And I look at the data from Wheat Ridge High School, Prospect Valley, Peak, Stevens, those school zones that are all now on major corridors. I think this is something that we need to look at. This is something that I have residents reaching out, asking for. So this is something that I will support as we move forward. But it's definitely something that I feel like we need to monitor and make sure that, you know, as, as the chief has said a couple of times, this isn't a money-making scheme. We've, we've had, we've seen that over the past in some cities around us where they've used traffic enforcement as a money-making scheme. And that's not what this is. This is a public safety measure and this is something that we want to move forward with because it's for the good of the public. So I think there's some people after me, so I won't ask for consensus yet.
Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this real quick. One of the things that's on here we haven't touched on tonight is the request, or at least the discussion about updating the municipal code to relate to the most recent version of the Colorado Motor Vehicle Code. And I would request that, during that process, something be included or at least expanded on in our municipal code on vehicle noise, mufflers, nuisance, impulse noise, that kind of thing. It can be a little more specific. If you look at the municipal code on emissions, it goes on for a couple of pages. And there's very, very little on mufflers. Noise is a serious issue, especially for those of us who live near the interstate. And I'd really like to see something that is specific that an officer can, when he pulls somebody over, he can say, you're violating our noise, vehicle noise issues. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. What what impact is this going to have on our other traffic calming measures? You know, extension, neck downs, traffic circles, speed humps, curb curb modifications and environmental work within our traffic corridors?
I think they work hand in hand. So, you know, I think enforcement just reinforces. So if we were to put these out, that if we're already trying to do engineering measures, it just further reinforces that and ensures that people are going the speed that they need to on those local streets.
So we're planning to continue an active and robust environmental retooling of our streets and and slowing traffic down rather than catching speeders as they go through. Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you. I'm going to ask for consensus, but I have one comment before I do that. I just wanted to let let my co counselors know that I hear it from a really close friend of mine that this process works really well and you do get two notifications in the mail and a certified letter. And and it's really clear and it gives you lots of information on how you can contest that if you so desire to do that. And I I find it to be, sorry, this other person finds it to be a very reasonable process. And I I think one that that after people initially get used to it, it's it's real. I I think it's going to be a good cost savings for us. Thank you, and I'm going to ask for consensus on that.
We did Counselor Holtine had had one more comment she wanted to make.
Sorry, I thought I made clear earlier that I wanted to respond to my constituents and my earlier comments were just about the automated enforcement. But we're also talking about just overall speed safety. So I just wanted to respond to the constituents who are here tonight. You know, I I am also not a fan of the neighborhood traffic management program. It is, you know, reactive and it requires neighbors to be organized enough to know what to do and have enough social capital. And if a neighbor holds out, it pits neighbors against neighbors. And in my district, since I've been elected, we've had a couple of pretty bad situations where neighbors really have gotten hostile because someone doesn't like what's going on. And so I really hope that what we're doing is the city is moving towards something that's proactive where we identify we have specific problematic corridors. It was mentioned earlier that Dover and Carr, Balsam-ish, are the only through corridors between thirty eighth and forty fourth from Wadsworth to Kipling. They're actually the only through corridors from Wadsworth to Youngsfield. There are no other streets that go through other than Kipling. So there is, yeah, I can see the math going in your head right now, Patrick. There there's none that go through from Kipling?
I think there's others through streets. They may not be as long as maybe those.
Not not that don't jog. There are none that go straight through. I mean, even Balsam jogs a little bit. Carr and Dover are the only two streets that go straight through.
Estes and Dudley.
That's not a straight through.
Yes, between between thirty second, thirty eighth.
Between thirty eighth and forty fourth. There are only two streets that go straight.
Forty fourth, yeah, yeah, sorry, it's late, I don't want to argue.
Anyway, so so, you know, Dover Street has come forward and we've met with them. And I think it's an opportunity for us to do a pilot project demonstrating what a proactive response from the city can look like if we're trying to like identify certain problematic city or streets. So I would love for us to continue to look at that. And the regional Safe Streets and Roads for All Grants are really looking at our high injury network roads that are typically our state interstates and not our local roads as much. So it just as we move forward with a vision zero strategy, I think it's an opportunity for us as a city to say on our local roads, which are principally our neighborhood roads, this is what safety looks like. Because the perception that it's not safe really matters a lot. Like, we can get a lot of data, but neighbors don't feel like it's safe. And so I think as a city, if we can be looking at and automated enforcement is a great first first step. But we have more and more like young kids riding around. When power was out yesterday, it became like, you know, the Tour de France in front of my my house because everyone had no computers. But so that perception in our in our corridors, on our main corridors is one thing, but in our neighborhoods is a little bit different. So I think as we start to, you know, I'm excited we're part of Jefferson County and Dr. Cog and that work. But those are data driven, high injury networks, which are bigger, busier roads. And so I think this conversation about how we're addressing our neighborhood streets is is distinct. So I'm glad you're working with with the Ad Ads and the Jeff Co, Bike Jeff Co, moving forward on that. Thanks.
Counselor Weaver? Counselor Hoppie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward using automated traffic control in our community.
Looks like we have consensus on that, not unanimous. Is that providing the information that you're looking for?
Yes, I appreciate that. Did that include red lights cameras as well?
So let me be more specific. So it would be red light enforcement, speed enforcement and safety reckless reckless driving enforcement.
Reckless warning.
Yes, reckless warning enforcement.
Okay, Counselor Holtine? Oh, you're just putting your hand up? Gee, that's a that's a great sign. All right.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this topic that we need to discuss tonight? Okay, thank you very much and good discussion. Let's see, let's go back to our agenda. Staff reports, Mr. Goff?
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Okay, elected officials matters. Seeing none, we will stand adjourned. We'll be back here for a study session next week.